We want to order, and if I could ask Mr. Vice Chair if you could read the announcements?
Indeed, the meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk by Zoom. In the event that the connection is lost at any time during the meeting, a device being used by the recording clerk for the purpose of taking minutes. Is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting?
I would like to record it.
Of course, Mr. Gant. While we are conducting town business using remote participation by Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment to please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. So we have two sets of minutes today?
Indeed, I would move to approve the minutes of the Select Board meeting held February 8th, 2021.
I have some input on those minutes, and I apologize. They only got to Debbie. I don't know if she even got them now, but it was just about one minute before. I'm sorry, I didn't get them sooner. I do have a number of changes to that one and some changes to the second one. If we want to go through them, I'd be glad to go through them now, but it's a number of things that...
Do we want to just delay them until the next meeting?
That's probably a good idea if you have a number of changes, Dick.
I think it's just...
Okay, I withdraw my motion then.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right, so moving on to the Masscanament Agreement. We have with us today both Chair Elwell from the Finance Committee and Member Karen Duval. I'm not sure who's going to be going through the document. I will mention that I did share, Che, the document that you had given me. It's off of Board Docs under Administrative Content, because I wasn't sure if we would have time to get a document up there, and I thought it might be easier to talk through. So that is there when it comes time to discuss it. If that's helpful, I can screen share it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It is a bit of a challenge, and I'll defer to Karen if she wants to start. But it is a bit of a challenge because there isn't one single agreement. What it is, is it's an agreement followed by many, many amendments, and it was never really put into a comprehensive, complete, and approved permanent agreement. Instead, it's agreement plus amendment plus amendment plus amendment to get us to where we are now. But Karen, do you want to take the lead? I should have talked with you on this, but take the lead on this one. You've had some conversations. If not, I can provide color as well.
And Karen, could I jump in for just one minute just to let you know? We did discuss the contents of this previously, and comments were given back to Melissa. So comments relative to the verbiage, not to the actual agreement to proceed with the numbers, but anything regarding the changes to election of members and the name change of Essex Tech and those kind of name wording changes we already provided back to Melissa. So the last that we left this is that we weren't going to discuss any of the numbers yet because we hadn't, or the school committee and the Finance Committee had not had a chance yet to talk with the state about their formula, and so that was a big unknown. So we haven't addressed any of the numbers to date.
Okay, so Che, I would ask if you're comfortable doing so from where you are right now, and perhaps, Lynette, it is best to show the calculations that Che has worked on following the conversation. But if you wanted to give a quick recap, Che, since I did not attend that meeting, and then we can move forward with the discussion about the intent of the change.
If Chair Bermudez, if you prefer, I'm happy to do that.
That's fine. Thank you.
So we've met with, as you, to level set and put everyone on the same page. So we, the agreement, the main driver of the agreement was to adjust over rolling four years to a five-year average for enrollment figures and the calculation of, the resulting calculation of the shares by each of the three towns. What happened was we developed greater understanding of, because of some significant impacts this year, of how the actual calculation is done. And there were two parts to it. One part that this agreement would impact, which is the... But before it gets to the agreement and this change and this calculation, before that, what happens is state calculates for each town what each town's spend, minimum spend should be for each school district that they're a member of. So in Topsfield's case, that means based on the number of enrollments, they calculate a minimum spend for the Topsfield Elementary School, for the Masco School District, and then because we have a very small number of people, for the Essex Technical District. That all in generally represents about half of the total budget for Masco, meaning our share plus Boxford's share plus Middleton's share averages out to about half of the total. The remaining half is what we learned is now impacted by this part of the agreement. So this agreement to go instead from an annual expense to a five-year expense, or a five-year average would affect about fifteen, give or take a couple of million dollars because things go up, but about $15 million of the budget. If anyone has questions on that piece before we get into the analysis I did, but if anyone has questions, I'm happy to address any. Or is that clear what I'm saying?
Just to say it another way, Che, the remainder is the part that's affected by the population, and that's $15 million for all three towns, the total of $15 million for all three towns.
About that. It's between 14 and 16.
Right, right.
Yeah, absolutely.
And 15 million is affected by what is minimum state, is minimum that regional school has to spend based on the state's formula, some of which is Topsfield, some of which is each of the towns.
So the way the minimum spend actually works at the state is it looks exclusively at each town and says, "This town should spend this much on education." So in our case, it says for Topsfield, Topsfield should spend $9.6 million on education as a minimum, a state minimum. You must spend at least this much. And then it looks at the number, their calculation looks at the enrollment, number of kids we have at Masco, the number of kids at Topsfield, and the number of kids at the Essex Tech. And so there's like a 2% or less than 2% total at, or no, it's about a 4% total at Essex. There's, and then it's normally about 48 and 49 at Masco and at the elementary school. So they say, okay, 9.6 million, 48% of that is what you should be paying to Masco as your base. And that's where you get the first stuff, the first percent portion. Then you get to the remainder, and the remainder, and I like your way, use of that word, the remainder is what the, we would look to do a rolling five-year average on the calculation. So in digging into that and looking at that, I looked at two things. I looked at both, what would it mean to us over the next four years as we, starting not with fiscal year 2022, but starting with fiscal year 2023, and doing a four years to get up. So each year you added an additional year of enrollment and average. So average two years and three years and four years and then five years in one. And the net cost or benefit to us of doing that, based on the enrollment numbers of here. And I just did that to make sure it wasn't significant either way. And overall, the net averages out to less than, about $100,000. I think it's $119,000, just based on the assumption of what the numbers said it would be. And that's in our favor. In other words, by going to this over the next five years, over the duration of those five years, it would save us about 100 and something, $120,000.
Or about $20,000 a year.
There's a couple of years where it hurts us. There are a couple of years where it helps us. So it averages out across it. It nets to 120. It's one, you know, a couple of the earlier years, we have a year or two where it's 45,000 or 50,000 swing one way, and then a couple of years it swings the other way. But it nets out that you add the, you take your credits and your derivatives on that, and it turns out to be about 120,000 that it's less than if we stayed with the one year, year over year, a single year. What was really more interesting and makes this really a powerful consideration, something that personally, and FinCom hasn't voted on this as a recommendation because you have to put on the warrant, but I wanted to put this out there as my personal belief, and I think the general belief, was if you ignore, if you didn't move to this, over the next 10 years, our numbers other than that 120,000 would average out year, the sum of those years would net out to be the same amount, right? Because all you're doing is just simplifying the peaks and valleys of the, of any major, major swing in enrollments. What is really unique about it is in, if you do it year over year, from our lowest point over the next 10 years to our highest point, and this is excluding growth. This is just if we took this year's budget and calculated based on a single-year average each of the next 10 years, or if we took and did that five-year rolling average. If we do a single year, our swing from our most expensive year to our least expensive year is a $500,000 swing. So, and there were a couple of years where it was a $200,000 or $400,000 swing for us, one way or the other. So from a budgeting perspective, that could be a challenge, right? Because next year we have a $400,000 save, the following year we have a $400,000 increase, you know, type of things and that. If you look at it and average the five years and use a running five-year average, the most change year over year on a flat budget would be about $125,000 or $130,000. So it is powerful because it gives us the ability to have a consistent spend in all of the towns, to have a consistent spend year over year, that still takes into consideration all of those, all of the benefits of, you know, enrollment dips or rises, but it averages them and spreads them over five years rather than having it be a sudden shock either way in a given year.
And this is a good year, doing it the way you're doing it, starting in 2023, is a good year essentially for all the towns to begin to start and its effect on them. Because if one town sees a problem for the next three years and the other two don't, it's, that town is not going to like this too much. So in general, you kind of looked at it, understanding the forecast for the next few years and doing it, adding one year at a time and so forth. It looks relatively fair to, not fair, an equal pain to each of the towns. Is that a reasonable statement?
I think there are some, our towns, for whatever reasons, and it's partially, it's because our growth is right now. I mean, we're getting hit this year because of some significant changes in enrollment that are benefiting the other towns. So if you just looked at it as a start point, I think it benefits us a little bit, but if you added in the disadvantage we're in this year, I think it makes it quite fair for all three towns. So we're paying more this year simply because our enrollment, not because of the seven enrollment, but because of what happened, what percentage, their shift in percentage on the first part, not the remainder, but on the initial state spend due to where our enrollment went, where we have a greater percentage of our enrollment in the high schools than we did in the, in middle school than we did in the elementary.
The numbers went down 80 students, Che. Is that what they were working on?
According to the state, so we met, that's a separate issue that we should talk about, but this, according to the state, the Topsfield Elementary Schools enrollment went down by 85 students. The town, the superintendent and the school committee think it's actually in the 60s, in 62 or 63, 31 of which were people who chose to homeschool, and another 25 or 30 were kids who chose, or parents who apparently chose not to enroll their kids in pre-kindergarten, or rather in kindergarten. So those kids, they anticipate coming back next year, but it's a one-year hit. And because of that 85 drop, it, they said, okay, there's about 7% of the overall $9.6 million that should now go to Masco instead of going to the elementary school from the town of Topsfield. So taking that into consideration, because for whatever reason, the other two towns didn't have such a noticeable drop in their elementary enrollments. But taking those, that into consideration, what it means is that we are now in a place where we're paying a little more of Masco's bill than we normally would have. If you had ignored that, there's about a $300,000 swing that way. So the other two towns are supportive of going forward with this, is what I would say. I think we get a little bit of karma payback, if you will, for what we're dealing with this year by going with next year.
It gives us some leverage that we, that we're doing this, we're taking this on this year.
Yeah, yeah. So the short of it is, is that financially, in the, in the transition to this, it's really not a, it's not a hit for us, and it's actually slightly a small, small, small amount. Remember, we're talking total, not, you know, Dick, to your point, it's, the average is out to about $20,000 a year, 20, actually, it's $30,000 a year. On, we give Masco almost $9 million, around $9 million. So, you know, it's a rounding error. It's money, but it's a rounding error. And it gets us to a place where all three towns can have a more consistent budget year over year, and planning can be easier and not have those, you know, bumps, those drastic swings. And instead, you know, you take any five years and you're still going to pay what you would have paid over those five years because of that average, but you're gonna, it's gonna settle those peaks and valleys.
Is there anyone anywhere who doesn't support this that we know of? I mean, because it seems equally beneficial to everyone, at least from financial, you know, planning standpoint.
Yeah, at this point right now, I'm not aware of anyone. I know Zilly's on the call, and she has mentioned to me that the towns are, other towns are supportive of moving forward, or appear to be, appear to be supportive of moving forward as well with a fiscal year 2023 start.
Looks like Zilly's giving us a thumbs up, so she agrees with that, Che.
Okay, thank you, Zilly.
Um, Che, I think Karen had her hand up. Karen, did you want to add something at this point?
No, I was just going to comment in that, you know, from the, from the start, Topsfield really has been the one that's wanted to run, you know, financials on, you know, in the calculations and really do, you know, a thorough evaluation of what, what the impact of this would be and how much of the annual budget would be affected by it, right, or the allocation would be affected by it. So I think at this point, you know, we are the last of the three to, you know, decide if this is something we're in support of.
And I think the only reason we delayed was Che and Karen and others had the open question of how is the state calculating that minimum required at the beginning and wanted to find out what that answer was before agreeing to the second half to see if it was a significant enough impact, and it appears as if it is.
Right. They are not, there's not a double, I was fearful there'd be a double counting, some sort of compounding. There's not. I do want to say that I was, the one person from Desi, from the state who explained it, for whatever reason, he impressed me very much. He was very clear in his explanation. So it was very helpful to do that. And it's unfortunate for us because of how we had a larger impact due to a larger number of student families choosing not to enroll their kids in the Topsfield schools. Ironically, that actually, having a higher impact cost in Topsfield actually saves us money in the long run. It's counterintuitive. But since we pay all of Topsfield's costs, Topsfield's costs, and Topsfield's costs for the elementary school, and Masco, the first thing they do is take every doll, ask, Masco takes every dollar that the state said is your minimum spend, and then they go and settle everything else after that. So since a significant portion of our money moved to Masco on the state's spend, we still have to pay the entire Topsfield Elementary School budget as it was, all of it. But there was about a $400,000 shift, $340,000 shift from Topsfield Elementary Minimum Spend to Masco Minimum Spend. Boyd, I think you have...
And what's the effect of that? The effect of that is that we would get a better bump on your, on our chapter 70?
No, it really doesn't. So here's the thing, our overall spend calculated by the state went down by $70,000. So the state said last year, you need to spend 9.67 or 9.68, $9.68 million. This year, they're saying because of enrollments and because of everything else, you need to spend $9.61 million. So it went down by about $70,000. The problem is, because we didn't have the 85 students at Topsfield, they said, okay, the percentage that you spend at Topsfield drops from 49 to 46 or 45% of your total spend. And the top percentage you spend at Masco goes up by that, by 40, by 3 or 4% to 48%. And so what you have is, we now have numbers that show Topsfield, last year, they said the state, we should spend about $5 million net spend at Masco, at Topsfield. Well, that doesn't matter because we spent the whole bill, so it's an unimportant piece. But they're saying of your 9.67 last year, 5 million that should be at the elementary school, and 4.4 million or so, 4.6 million, no, 4.4 million should be at the Masco. This year, that same calculation, they dropped what we should be spending at Topsfield by 400 and something thousand dollars, 417, I think it is, and they increased Masco's by $340,000. So because of that enrollment, they take the 9.617 million and just simply multiply that by the percentage of Topsfield students that are at Masco. And since that number went up, the number we give to Masco goes up. But the budget for Topsfield hasn't gone down, so we have to, so we didn't get that save, right?
So next year, Che, if those students come back again, the percentage is shift back, and our share going to Masco goes down?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Che, you're a master at the numbers. I tried to follow, and I have a concept of them, but I ain't following them in detail. So the only question is, is there a spreadsheet with this information so we can take a good look?
So there is a spreadsheet. I wish I, I'm not in a place, unfortunately, I'm not at home.
It's not a problem now, but because I'm not going to look at it now and make sense of it, but if I had time to look at it sometime in the future, I might, I might be able to understand the details. But I'm delighted that we have someone in the town of Topsfield, or several people, including Karen and you at least, who can well describe what this is all about. Thank you for your efforts.
And I'll happily share my notes after class, but there's a lot of stuff crossed out and a handful of question marks.
A portion of this is actually up on Board Docs, Dick, under Administrative Content.
Okay, thank you.
So I will share also the one, there is a single, so the spreadsheet I have is for every town in the state, and you can look, look at it for each town. It's pretty usable. But there is one, one tab on it that it, it just shows last year's and this year's only for Topsfield, and it's a really powerful one-pager that if you look at, that's the one that'll, once you look at it, it will help you to understand what I was saying. So I will, it's there, but I'll email both of those later on tonight. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to explain it further and just reach out to me. If not, on the one page, you can, because it shows last year's and it shows this year's, and it shows Topsfield, Masco, and Essex Tech. So I'll, I will email that out to you as well as the full spreadsheet, which is everything, and you can just type in the town on the index page, and every tab adjusts to the, the details for that town. So you could look at Boxford, you could look at Middleton, you could look at Topsfield, you could look at Boston. I mean, every town is in it. So the Desi gives a pretty, once you understand it, gives their spreadsheet, gives a pretty encompassing and explanation of the calculation.
And the good thing for today's meeting is that we're really only voting on, interested in the remainder piece that we can control because we cannot control the first half, which is the state formula. Are there any questions today about that second half? What, Dick?
If we're voting on anything in this area, it's to delete what has been in place for 50 years and replace it with this process of a five-year implementation of a rolling or a smoothed, over a five-year smoothed costing.
Right, so the first year, the first time that we do this will be a two-year average, then three, then four, then five, working up to it. So all the numbers are up on that, under Administrative Content so that you can see the impact that Che was talking about, that he and Karen have worked on with the school committee, and it is favorable, and you can see that the swings would be much more dramatic if we, if we don't go to this smoothing.
And it's going to be there apparently for the other towns also, in the same way, some better, some worse years, but not as big a swing. The ability to get into this at a particular point where all the towns can agree is delightful because this was attempted by Middleton when they were growing very quickly, and it just wasn't going to fly with the other two towns. But the work that's been done here is outstanding if you've been able to pull that off. Is there any reason that we cannot move this from administrative to public, that information? Is it too complex to understand?
No, the only thing that I would say is that this spreadsheet, I actually added a column myself to see what would be the swing from year to year if we didn't do this. And so this is not a sanctioned spreadsheet because that column that I added, so I just put it under Administrative. I can pull out my column and then share it. That was the document that Karen and Che had shared with Kevin and myself.
And with all, and essentially with all the towns too.
And with all the towns. This is the one document that everybody's working on.
Justifies to the other towns, well, gives them the information they need to make the decision, the effect on them, and therefore making the decision that, yeah, we can accept that change.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't do the five-year impact well, did it do the five-year impact? Yeah, it did. Never mind. It did. For each of the towns. It certainly averaged out the, and did a compare of peaks and valleys, the deltas, the change in delta.
Great.
Based on what I've heard you say, Che, and Karen, I appreciate the work that you guys have put in. I am excited about the fact that we've got people in the Finance Committee that can do this and understand what they're talking about. I believe you made the case to me about the fact that by going to this five-year rolling average, we haven't hurt ourselves greatly, and we've provided a really good budgeting tool that makes the budgeting process much, much easier. Because I've listened to you guys for years, and every year we have a problem with trying to budget for these big swings. And this eliminates it, and I think it's a wonderful tool. Thank you again very much.
Are there any other questions before we make a motion about these changes? There are actually four sets of changes that we'd be voting on.
But the other ones don't relate to this.
The only one that relates to this is the payment schedule.
We're spending a lot of time talking about one area and the other one. I think they're much simpler, but for anybody who's listening or listens to this later on, this, this is only, we're only discussing one of the four elements that are being suggested for amendments. However, I did talk with Zilly and then with Melissa a couple of... However, I, I did talk with Zilly and then with, um, Melissa, a couple of days ago, about a, a suggested recommended change to this, essentially this same section because we're talking about the assessment and the student population that creates that assessment. And so, uh, I actually sent, I, I, I guess perhaps Melissa has looked at this, my suggestion, and maybe drafted some language. I haven't heard back from her, but, um, I, I suggested some language today. Let, let me just read it. It's a, it's essentially adding an item six after, after the, uh, the other, the things that talk about the 2023, 2024, 2025, th- those things. There's an item six here, and my suggested language, um, has to do with trying, uh, providing transparency in the population calculation on October 1st. In other words, October 1st, the Masconomic goes through and finds out what students are there in the school and from what schools, what towns rather. And based on that provides the assessment ratio of population. And that's a lot, that's what we're talking about right here, is this assessment of the population. Uh, the question sometimes has been, hmm, why did my population go up that much? I only thought there were this many students or whatever the case may be. This is transparency because it asks for the district, the school district, when they do that calculation, to forward to each individual town the students that are included in that population. So if they say that there are from Topsfield, uh, what would be 100 students, uh, then there would be a list showing the 100 students and their addresses. And it's up to the town if they want to do anything with it, but at least it's something recorded and filed, in this case by the town clerk, because, uh, some of this information is relatively, can be considered relatively confidential because it's residents under the age of 18. So very quickly, it's a simple sentence, um, in this item six. By November 1st of each year, the regional school district shall provide to the town of, to the town clerk in each member town, the name and address of each pupil in their respective town that is in that year's October 1st pupil, pupil enrollment data for purposes of assessment. It's that simple. So there, hopefully, and we can get that one in, but I think it's the right thing to have the right transparency.
I, I don't actually think it's that simple, Dick. Um, first of all, it's the first time that we've been hearing it, so I, I wouldn't be comfortable without talking with the school committee and finding out if that's actually legal to share that information.
For all of them, of course.
Yeah, so that it wouldn't be on the, the table today. I would love to see their reaction to that. I know they have a timeframe to get these changes in, and anything that we propose would have to go back to the school committee, the policy subcommittee, and the other two towns. Is this a major problem that we have right now? I don't know, maybe Che or Karen or Zilly can speak to. Do we find that we disagree with the numbers that are being presented in this apportionment?
Well, the, the point is we can't, we can't verify it.
Well, they, they might verify it, Dick, I don't know. We're, we're speaking as a group that does not have access to those numbers and we don't know anything about it. So Che or Zilly or Karen, do you know, do we disagree with the numbers that are being provided? Do we feel there's an issue there?
Um, so I, I, Melissa did do a quick check-in with our superintendent and, um, there's not, I'm trying to remember how she phrased it because I think it wasn't, she told me in a phone call, so I apologize about remembering the wording that was used, but basically it's not something that we could add. There were, there was a legal element to it as far as, um, data for the, um, resident information and that we have not seen an issue like that, any issues from this. And it's the same, it's basically like any time of year that can adjust. It's just like with anything, you kind of take a snapshot on that day and base it on that. If it changes by one or two, a day before or a day after, it could change by one or two, six months later as well. So as far as the impact, I don't think there's a concern. And as far as whether we could do it, I believe we could not. There was, I apologize, I'm looking for it to see if I have it in writing, but I do know that I circled, I tried to get that from Melissa. And she did check with Mike and it did not sound like something we could do.
So there is an answer then from Mikey saying it is not possible to do?
Don't quote me, so, because you know, it's third person away, Melissa had a work meeting, so she couldn't be here today. Um, but that was my understanding, yes, correct.
Okay, um, we, the, the, the issue is, when is it going to be final, that we know yea or nay?
I think this is the first time that this is being brought up, Dick. I don't even think the other board members knew that you submitted a request for a change to the agreement. So I don't know that the board has asked the school to look into that.
Yes.
Nothing from the board.
This is relatively new. I, I, again, I spoke with Melissa, uh, perhaps, and Zilly about two days ago. Zilly will maybe remember. So it's a relatively new thing that I've, has come up, but in the fact that we're doing amendment, uh, it, it ought to be considered. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but it, it certainly seems like the sort of thing that we should have considered. We've had problems in the past with this. Um, clearly, uh, when we had the Masconomic, um, ABC program here, that was a problem. But I'm sure that there are other times where there was questions, and you say it's not a big deal perhaps. As Zilly was saying, you know, a student here may be something, whatever, but each one of those represents something like $15,000. So, you know, we're already talking about the relatively small $20,000 because we do this and that's the swing. But, um, it's, it's small, but it's, it's, it's something that, uh, is appropriate for transparency. So I'm, I'm willing to wait to find out what, what, uh, the.
Well, I, I would recommend, since they're having a meeting tonight and they would like to get agreement from the three towns on the issues that are on the table, that we vote on what's on the table. And we can discuss offline with Melissa this issue and find out more information about what actually was the discussion with Dr. Harvey, what might be the concerns. But I don't want to hold up everything that the, the policy group and the school committee and the other boards have worked on for months for something that's new and just being presented today. So if everybody's in agreement, I'd like to at least move forward on what's.
I didn't realize what was going on with this November, with, uh, tonight. But sure, uh, if this is an important thing and they're trying to move with that much of it, great. But I sincerely hope that they do take a look at this and tell us what their take is on it and try to get it in there if they can, because it's, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't represent any calculations. It doesn't represent any additional work for them because they have to come up with that name, that list of names, just to understand the numbers. So, uh, great, but I'm willing to go ahead with, with what's on the table, uh, up to this date, except for that, uh, that.
Well, if I could.
The final wording then is for this?
It's what's on Board Docs, it has not changed.
It's, it's, it's not the, the ba, the date on the Board Docs is what we had, and we had at least, I have at least one change, I think. Uh, didn't we have that one change in there for?
We had, uh, two changes you recommended, Dick, that had gone over to Melissa, um, that.
I, I just want to ask if anybody specifically knows, at the end of, uh, the second item was to change the wording, uh, from accurately as possible to.
She incorporated both your changes.
Reasonably practicable.
Yes, Dick, that was incorporated. Yes, Dick, that was, this is Zilly speaking, and yes, Melissa confirms that that was incorporated.
Thank you.
So if I could make a motion, because I, I would like to just, um, enlarge the motion slightly because, uh, the motion addresses the apportionment formula and the payment schedule, which are two of the four components. The other two are minor, but I'd like to put them into the motion to say that we agree with the four areas. The other two areas we had already looked at, and as Dick had mentioned, he had comments at our last board meeting and those were forwarded over to Melissa. So we have already looked at the other two components, but let me make the motion and see if anybody needs to tweak it at all. But I would say, vote to approve the district agreement between the town of Topsfield in conjunction with the towns of Boxford and Middleton, Mass, and the Masconomic Regional School District to amend certain changes as presented with Mr. Gant's edits to the apportionment formula and payment schedule for operating costs and housekeeping items regarding the election of members and the name change of the North Shore Agricultural and Technical School. I think that incorporates the four areas.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion or questions?
Did you, did, did you, did the motion include, uh, I guess the, the housekeeping is included in that? I guess I didn't catch those words.
Yes, the house, um, keeping items that are actually.
Items, okay.
Yep. So any other questions for Karen or Che or Zilly at this point before we vote?
Can I make a point of clarification?
Sure, Zilly.
Just when you said the, um, um, the only edit that was incorporated from what was sent by your board is the one about the, um, reasonably practical, practical.
The name change of election of committee members was not accepted?
We're not, we're not changing that. There's no need to change it, it doesn't change the meaning of the, you know, um, it's, it accurately describes, the title as it was accurately describes what it needs to describe, so that won't be changed. The only change will be the part about the language reasonably practical. I just want to make sure that was understood before you, so you don't think you're voting on something different.
Thank you, and actually, when I sent it over to Melissa, I did say Mr. Gant had said the, um, accurately as possible is essential.
Didn't have to change the top.
Right, the other one didn't matter as much.
Just to be clear, there, there, this is a change in the title of that particular section, but again, I, it's not necessary, okay.
So it's just with Mr. Gant's one edit?
Yes.
All right, so roll call, uh, Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Hook.
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Che and Karen and Zilly and Melissa and the whole team for all the work in pulling this together. I know it was months of, of discussion, we appreciate your hard work on this.
Great.
Great work, everybody.
Kevin, do you have any final words you wanted to add, or we good?
The only, uh, item right now that's in process is the, um, the warrant articles associated, which we'll talk about shortly, um, I, I'm sure. So, um, I'll pause on anything further, but I'll just echo a lot of moving parts, a lot of kudos to the school and to, to Zilly and her team and Melissa, um, and, and Chair Bermudez and everybody, um, to make it all come together today. Uh, great work, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here today, Che and Karen and, and Zilly, to answer questions and explain.
You're welcome, thank you all.
Thank you for having us. All right.
Are you doing the SRO? I'm going to stay on, I'm going to stay on if you're doing the SRO next.
We're not actually, that, that's not an item today, Zilly, it's been removed.
Okay, okay, so thank you from me as well.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Okay, so the resource officer will be, uh, deferred to a, a later date. So the next item that we're going to discuss is the town warrant for 2021. So Kevin, can I turn it over to you and your very thick document that you managed to get out to everybody? Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you all for, um, the opportunity to share. So, um, yeah, a lot of really hard work by a lot of great people to pull together, um, what we have, the version 2.01 dated 3/21. Um, that is the latest version of the warrant, the one that was distributed Tuesday evening. The hope for today is, is, I'll give a quick rundown of what was incorporated at a high level, then we can go through the articles, um, with the group and, and if there's anything else we need to discuss or incorporate, we can make those, um, make that happen. Uh, plan then will be to distribute another version, but not, I should also say, I've sent this out, this version out to the, to the department heads as well, um, for any last feed, minute feedbacks. There might be a couple of further tweaks that I do receive. In addition to that, I mentioned we're waiting for the Masco comments, uh, or the, the language, I should say, for the, what we just voted to incorporate into this as well. There's a, there's placeholders in there now, um, good shape, their legal team, the Masco's legal team is preparing the, um, the language. Uh, we took a shot at it, um, and for at least, like I said, a placeholder purpose. Uh, but because that overlaps three different communities, um, with further discussion, Masco, um, is, is taking ownership of crafting some, some language that they'll distribute to the three communities for inclusion. And I know they're expediting that, uh, knowing that we're all working hard to get this finalized.
Excuse me, Kevin, I, I didn't follow specifically which ones are you talking about? When you said Masco, this is the part about the amendments we just did?
All four men, all, there's four separate.
All you're talking about just now was, when you said Masco is the amendments.
Yes, this, the four you've just voted on, which are, it represented as individual warrant articles. All four of those will be edited based on.
That's a given, we've discussed that. The, the wrappers for the, the data, the changes need to be worked on, is what you're saying, correct? The wrappers, in other words, the explanations of what we're doing, these are the changes, but how we're going about it need to be worked on.
So, yes, yes, in essence, I'm, I'll see what they provide us with, but that there, it falls in their court at this point. So, um, some of the other things I'll mention in this version, the water tank inspection article was removed. The vaccination revolving fund article was removed. The marijuana bylaw article was removed. And added to this was a five, the five-year elementary school cafeteria management contract, similar to the bus article that's already in there. In addition to that, um, the zoning articles, um, the planning board are working on those languages. I expect that to, uh, back any day to incorporate. The math in focus, I found out yesterday after distribution of this, that the math in focus will not be an article that the school's requesting this year.
Will not.
Will not be. So we have $85,000 in free cash that was going to be earmarked for that. That is now coming off the books. Um, they're looking for other sources to fund the, the curriculum at this point.
So they intend to do it, but not through this vehicle, not through this, yeah, vehicle?
That's my understanding, yes.
Do you know why? I'm just curious. Because I, I only ask because I know that that's something they've been looking for, for years.
So I, it was, it was interesting, oh, so, um, the finance director for the school, Steve Greenberg, and I, um, were missing each other just from schedules. And then he finally, yesterday afternoon, sent me a text saying, purpose of my call is to say we're taking math in focus off the warrant article. Um, follow up at a future date. We have a meeting with them on Tuesday, so I think we'll have a further discussion of what they're, they're trying to. But, um, for purposes of getting prepared for today's meeting, um, I wanted clarity on what they're, what they're, what they're.
Okay.
And then the elementary school clocks, um, those were not included at any point in, as a warrant article this year. Um, it was initially in the, but, um, capital budget, but it, the schools prior to distribution on Tuesday, we had a conversation about that. And it was recommended that we take that off of the warrant as well. So the clocks are coming off and they're going to look for other, the reason they're off is two reasons. One, obviously financial constraints, but second, they have other projects that they have prioritized that will take capacity from the team. And they're afraid that in this next year, they won't actually have the chance to get to that project. So they said, under those circumstances, we'll punt on that for now, uh, come back to it in a future year. Um, or alternative funding mechanism, uh, to, to fund that. And then.
Did we lose Boyd? Did he have to go for a moment? I just don't want to have to repeat anything, um.
But again, the, the main reason then for pulling the clocks is that they do, do not have the resource, the, the human resources to do the implementation in the coming year.
It's still in need, always has been, but that's, uh, that's my understanding.
Debbie's, Debbie's reaching out and trying to call him, he might have just had a technical glitch, but.
Certainly, I'll pause for a minute.
Can I ask a really mundane question that I'm sure Boyd won't care about, but, um, just under article third, and it just jumped out to me, the wording, which is the same, there's no changes, this is not you, Kevin, but, um, the two descriptions, um, in one area, they talk about appropriated sum of money for schools, plural, highway and town expenses. And then in the description that's in italics, it says, um, within the levy limit for general government and the elementary schools. Is there a reason, and maybe Dick, you know this more going back, that they don't? Is there a reason, and maybe Dick, you know this more going back, that they don't, that they specify just the elementary schools in that italics portion?
Yeah. It, it should be elementary schools because there's another article for the, uh, for, uh, both the Essex County, the Essex Technical and Mascon Armut. So this is only for the elementary schools.
So it should just say probably elementary schools in the upper part.
I'll make that change.
In, in both, in both parts, right? I mean.
Yeah, it's in the bottom. It just wasn't in the top. So.
Should be in both. Yes. Excellent.
Well, no problem.
Um, Boyd was having technical difficulties. He'll be back with us in a few minutes, he said. Okay.
I, I'm sorry, but the, the version that I have in front of me simply says schools in both the warrant and the recommendation.
Um, mine doesn't. Um, I don't know.
Wait a minute. I'm looking at version 2.01.
Yes, that's what I'm looking at too. So if you.
Looking at the same one and see.
In the description, in the, it's the first and the second. So the top piece and the recommendation say schools. The comments at the bottom say elementary school. So I'll put the word elementary in both the second section where the recommendation is in the first.
The italics part.
Explanation has elementary. The other two should have elementary in them.
Yes.
Third paragraph says elementary. The first two do not.
Thank you.
I think we have Boyd back, so.
We do.
Let's just talk about the status of this now. Uh, so you got this out to us on Tuesday. You've gotten feedback from us, I believe, right? You have, for example, for me, there's a number of markups in it that I've, I've seen. Oh, let me go back. To go to the version two, did you accept all of the changes to that point?
So the version two that was distributed, I took, um, both, um, Chair Bermudez's, um, uh, edits, incorporated those, and then took, um, your edits, Mr. Gant, incorporated those. Anywhere where I did not incorporate them in their entirety, I left a note in a bubble on a comment just to say uh, this is why, why we, uh, change might not have been made. So I, if I have a single document, I incorporated everybody since that one. So.
The, the reason you could, the reason you could not accept all of the changes is that we, we really hadn't deliberated on them. I just, I realized that. So, uh, my thought is that it probably, it's not a big deal, but probably is not version two. It would tend to be version 1.0 something so that it's, in other words, it has, we haven't incorporated the changes, so we don't make it a new version. Um, okay, okay. And the reason was that we hadn't gotten together to deliberate. Thank you.
Yeah.
Actually, Kevin, I, I was working on version, oh yeah, 2.1, 2.01. Yep.
That's so every, so every time I distribute to the whole, I'll change it from version one when the first one goes out. I'll take any edits I receive in between and do 0.01, 0.02. When I have a further distribu-, further distribution of, to everybody, I'll change that to bit version 2.01.
No, 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 no. We don't change it to 2.01 until we deliberate and get those changes agreed to. And then you accept them and create a new version. So a new version has the changes, maybe not all of them. They may have to be, you may have to say, okay, these, these somehow did not get in for some reason, but that's how we, that's how we're going to be able to control the versions.
So the version 2.01, which was distributed on Tuesday night, which was a mass distribution to FinCom, to you folks, to, to the other parties that, um, have a stake in it at this point. Um, like I mentioned earlier, incorporates prior feedback from the select board received up until that Tuesday of distribution. Anything that didn't have an update, uh, anything I didn't include directly from your updates, I made a note. For instance, there was one article, we'll talk about that in a few minutes, that, uh, Chair Bermudez circled on a document. Um, but I just wanted for, for the clarification during this process before I made the change, if a change is needed. Um, so, um, my, my plan will be to incorporate changes from you folks today. Like I mentioned earlier, the, the, the final review from the department heads is taking place as well. Um, incorporate those and set a, a, for a next version out to everybody, but I know, I think Mr. Gant has a different approach to it, which is fine. I just want to make sure I get it right for you folks. So there's no confusion.
Okay. Here's my suggestion. Now, the most important thing we do today is accept the changes that are in this 2.01 that you distributed on March 2nd. Okay. To be able to agree on the changes.
Hundred percent. That's the hope.
And then, once we're done today, you take that and we take it and save it as 2.02. Okay?
Okay, that's fine.
And then you take the changes that you have received from us since Tuesday and integrate them into two. And we get together and discuss those, that integrated changes, which at that point will be 03, because you've integrated the changes into 02. And then we, we get together and get all of those changes, agree to them and give it back to you and you accept them all and make it version three.
All right. I'm, I'm really confused.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest, rather than, than haggle over version numbers right now, uh, can we proceed with actually looking at the changes and we can figure out version numbers at the end?
Yep. And then whatever we go through today and anything else that's been given to you can be consolidated and that comes out as our next version. So why don't we dive in and just start going through the changes? So, um, does anyone have any concerns with what's in this version? Maybe that's the easiest way because there's a lot here that might be fine. So does anyone have any concerns? We can just start at the beginning and go through and see if there's any issues?
So, Madam Chair, if it's all right, I did receive, um, comments from Mr. Gant, which I have in front of me here. I, for version control purposes, I wrote it on my last version, the 2.01, hand wrote it in. What I might be able, if it's acceptable, um, just from an order of purpose, I can kind of go through this and indicate those changes.
I don't, I think, I think we're going to get into trouble. As I said, what we should be doing is taking what you have given us at 3/2 and everybody has seen and go through and accept or reject all of those changes. So you have a clean document with what everybody agrees to.
So we'll just look at the red line. So basically we'll take the document and go through the red line and just make sure you folks are good with the edits on the red line. Come back at a future with the edits that you provided me before the meeting.
Which, which we could agree to in an hour. If we made it through all of these other things, we could. But I don't think we can. I, I think it's, I don't think we're going to get to that point. It's more important that we agree, have one solid document that we all agree to and that you can accept the changes so that we don't have change on change on change, which will only get to be very confusing.
Okay. So we, Madam Chair, I'll, if, if.
Yeah, let's just start at the beginning. And if we go through, some of these, we're going to say no change. Good. Let's go on. So if we look at article first, that's good. There was no change. Article second, it doesn't look like there were any changes other than numbers going in, Kevin?
Those are just the updated numbers, correct?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, any question on two?
That number two, right? Okay. You said.
I'm just going to accept those numbers if there isn't any further concern or questions on those.
Yep. Okay. Article third, um, we just talked about changes adding in the word elementary in two sections. So it's consistent in all three paragraphs to say elementary schools.
Do you want me to do that now or wait to do that later?
Right. I, I would, right now.
Okay.
Or you can write it down. What is, whatever is easiest for you, Kevin. I don't want you to have to be, you know, haggling with the document.
What I'll do is I, I hand wrote on this version, the red line I have Mr. Gant's updated.
That's fine. And as, as Lynn said, what works for you, but I, I felt that that, whatever works for you, but, but somebody, you gotta keep the track of it. Sure. Then right on.
Yeah.
So what I'll do, we'll go through the red line, accept the red line that of the version 2.01. And any additional edits or corrections since Tuesday you might have, or we see as we go through this outside the red line, I'll hand write it in and it'll be incorporated next version.
Sounds good. Okay. Any other changes on article third? Hearing none, we'll move to article fourth. We just have number updates here, Kevin?
That's correct.
Okay. So I.
Have the word this, the word this was included in front of, in the recommendation.
Okay. I, I want to talk about a, a concept here, which we can reject or accept. Um, uh, about four or five years ago, KP Law changed the way we would do things. Normally within an article such as this, the motion would say as above. In other words, to accept the, the, uh, budget as shown above. But they said, no, you gotta say, uh, in the article, you gotta put the article number in there because it could be confusing as to what's above. So fine, they did that. I think it's very confusing, however, for somebody who doesn't understand our, our legalese talking here to say fourth. Well, wait a minute, that's what I'm in. So I am suggesting that wherever we do that reference, and it's okay, that we simply add the word this article fourth. It doesn't take away with KP wanted. They wanted to know what article it was, but it also lets somebody say, oh yeah, this one, four. Okay. So.
He did, he did put that in, Dick.
But please.
He did put that in.
It's in there.
It's in there.
It's in there. But, but I, I, but it's my suggestion and I'm asking if we are willing to change our standard, um, approach of standard formatting to add that wording.
So you're saying doing it in all other articles as well?
In any article in which there is the same, uh, we're, we're referring to the same, the, the, the article itself, right in that, uh, motion.
Okay. If KP does not have any issue, I don't have any issue. That's, seems to clarify.
Anybody else have an issue?
Nope.
Good. I, I think it reads better. It's clarifying. It doesn't confuse somebody who's, good. Thank you.
Okay. So what you did, Kevin, uh, can be accepted.
Accepted. Excellent. All right. Um, the next one here is article five, where there was a recommendation that we show total Masco budget, um, year over year. Um, so I left, I, I added a line for that and obviously left the section yellow as we finalize the Masco numbers as well.
I like that. It clarifies.
Good. Yeah. I, I'd actually like to, I didn't read that and care carefully. I'm sorry. Uh, but I, I will, I, I read the other one, but, and made the comment. I'll, I'll read that more carefully. So just sense that it's, uh, really clear to residents when they read it, but thank you for getting it in there.
Absolutely. And if you, if you want to, just send me that line and I'll update it accordingly. But for purposes of now, for placeholders, it's accepted with further comments from.
As far as I'm concerned, it's right unless I see something.
Looks good.
Future.
We'll accept that. Excellent. Um, and then obviously, uh, Essex Tech, we received our numbers. Um, so those are just the numbers as they present, were presented. And then in the, uh, comment section, we have 25 students, um, which.
Kevin, just a quick question, because I don't really understand as much Essex Tech's costs, but so we went up three students and there was a, a 13% increase in our costs.
Yeah. So they, um, because we only.
Makes sense. I mean, there's two things going on here. One is we're going up in students and the other is that the budget went up. So the 13% is a pretty good deal, I think.
So we, if you, if you.
I don't know the total students, so I don't know if three is very tiny or very big percentage wise.
Well, it's 25. We, we, so currently there are 25 students enrolled. So three is over 10%.
Yeah, but similar to Masco, we're a percentage of Masco. It's not the number of our students per se. It's the percentage that we are of Masco. And that's how our course, uh, costs are proportioned. I don't know the three student increase relative to what if 50 students went up and three of them were Mascos or Topsfield.
I think, I think largely in the case of the Essex, they have, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't know this for sure, but I think the concept is they have a stable student population and some people don't get in. It's almost like a lottery that want to get in. I, I think that's the case because they have finite size and the number of places that would want to come in. It could be that they don't have enough students trying to get in, but I believe that they have a lot of students. So it tends to be, uh, your increase is your increase over the, what the school handles.
Okay. As I said, I didn't have a background.
Their, uh, uh.
Don't know.
School population a couple of years ago was just shy of 1,400. So.
And 20, 25 are from Topsfield. Okay.
Yeah. So the, um, Topsfield's assessment, I think of the ma-, the major driver, it's also the operations increased annually or year over year, but the, the biggest drivers that is the actual increase, although small numbers, if you look at the, the small proportionment, that's, we have of the, the whole body. Um, ours, our numbers based on that fixed number of, uh, enrollments went up. So, um, that's, that's what.
You're comfortable with it. I'm not as close to the, the math of it. So.
Yeah. It, in, um, so, and at that, to that end, that, 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 those lines represent the request to sort of spell that what that means. It's a little, it's addition to what we've done traditionally, but it does provide a little bit more insight in what, what those, the, the increase looks like year over year. Um, again, same thing with this. I'll accept this, uh, distribute it. And if anyone has any further edits to this line or others, um, feel free.
That's a good write there. Excellent. And the explanation, yeah.
Um, excellent. So.
Article seven didn't have any changes.
Yeah, we can go probably all the way to article, um.
Article.
Following the 12.
With no number?
Yeah.
Article after consent agenda.
Town hall generator?
Town hall generator. So the Lauren Goldberg comment on the side, I wanted to make sure everyone had a chance to, to read that. The band premium, um, as we've talked before, is different than the bond premium. Um, we've got multiple veri-, verifications that the, the band premium is, um, something we for this type of, um, purpose. So, um, I'll probably eliminate that comment, but I just wanted to make sure it was referenced in case anyone had any questions on that before I did so.
I have to say, I'm trying to figure out which one you're on.
Oh.
It would be 13 if it were numbered. It comes after the 12th, the end of the consent agenda, but it doesn't technically have a number.
The generator.
The generator.
Okay. I'm s-, I'm sorry. Could, could I just go back to the facilities for a second? Then.
Sure.
The, the, the amount of money in there is 27,000. I went back and looked, uh, last year we did 37,000 and the year before that we did 25,500. Um, just to, because it may come up, people may ask, what was the thinking on how we came up with 27 there versus something else? And, and it is a fund, so we should know, we don't have to answer the question now, but we should know how much is, how much we have in the fund now, or how much we would expect to have in a town meeting time, because somebody may ask the question. So.
Kevin, I thought it was 25. What, wasn't last year 25 and you were asking for 2,000 more?
So, um.
That's a, good, good. Keep going.
So traditionally, um, my understanding, prior to me being here, 25,000 has been the target for this line item. Last year to balance, um, we did, we, we scrubbed a lot of the capital items, remember, which is free cash. This one ended up being a $22,000 appropriation for free cash into that, uh, maintenance fund. This year we're at 27 and, um, the, like I said, target's typically 25. Um, we have a, a facilities line item, uh, within our omnibus, which is not free cash. And that's where we're having our tightest, our, our biggest struggles this year to balance. Um, there has been requests in the past to, to increase some of those items. Um, we've not. Um, so we're out, we took, we slightly adjusted this one up by $2,000, um, less than 10% um, in this year. Both because last year's was down in understanding in our omnibus this year, we have less monies available to us for facilities and maintenance purposes. Um, so that was the, sort of the thought process in, in generation, uh, how we ended up getting to the 27 this year. Um.
Could I ask, I, maybe I misunderstood Dick's question. Dick, it sounded like you were saying last year this fund had 37,000 in it.
I, I don't know how much was in it, but at town meeting, we appropriated 37,000.
So we have a line item in our omnibus.
Which is, uh, I, I, I understand what your question is, because the numbers are very similar. As, as Kevin was saying, there's several different lines, several different things going on. This is a warrant article that is used to quote, "fund any town building that has a, a problem," so to speak, and doesn't have enough money in their maintenance to, in their maintenance budget to take care of it. This is, um, um, a large slush fund to go out and, and pay for something, a surprise, and they don't have money to pay for. This is a large slush fund to go out and pay for something, a surprise, and they don't have money to pay for it. There is also, in the omnibus budget, not as a warrant article, but as the budget itself, a request for 25,000 normally, plus 200,000, and 20,000. 2,000 would come out, would come out as a total of 27,000 for the purposes of paying the consultant, Paul Anastasi.
So in essence, FinCom actually asked this question the other night. The one in the budget is for the people cost, that line item, that's Paul's. This is the physical components part of it. So if we need to for leveraging Paul at the library for helping us with the scope of work and oversight of the the subpumps in the basement that fail and an engineering study associated with it, that's, that, those funds would be drawn from there, if not partly from the library. This fund would help us if that cost came in over what we estimated, and we can't handle in that omnibus budget. So if we had a failure, that's what this would cover us. And it's
It looks like last year, the article asked for 22,000. The warrant.
Whoa, I looked the wrong warrant then. Thank you.
I think the year prior.
This is the 2020. And it was for 22.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
In 19, I think it was 25,000. And so this year's 27. So it's always sort of been in that, that range.
Okay, so this comment then just can come out, since you have word from KP that we're authorized to use the funds from the band for an item like this?
Yeah, I'm gonna, the next version will not have that comment in there. And then, just in the edits that, in the red line below that, adding the word wood, fund. And then some word tweaking. There was a question posed about the heating system with what the generator is going to power. Is it the split units? Is it just the base building unit? It is just the base building. So one of the things that handwritten in here is to say in the, in the comments in the last line, the generator would also provide power to the base building's heat system. So the hallways where we have the boiler, the split units would not be powered, so we'll just say base building, because the split units are individual office space.
I think it may be better to simply say the boiler, so there's no question as to what the base system is. Some people may think the base system is something else or whatever. I think clearly then.
Would you, so buildings boiler heating system?
Boiler, yeah. The boilers, the heating's boiler, the
The heating system of the boiler?
The portion of the
Where the boiler?
System, that the portion of the heating system served by the boiler system, the portion of the heating of the town's heating serviced by the boiler system. It's a system because it includes the circulators and all that sort of thing.
Did you get that, Kevin?
I've got general sense on that. Will I send it out? If you want to tweak it a little bit, Mr. Gant, feel free.
That's fine. You're gonna put another change in here in the next thing. And we'll go through the wording on that at the time, but you've got the idea of what we're trying to accomplish.
Great. Next is the police cruiser. We can see the word changes that Kevin made. Anyone have any concern with the wording?
Okay. So I sent, I think this is the wording that I sent to the chief. I never heard back from the chief. The chief and I are going to have some discussions, because I tried to clean this up before I, you know, before I sent it forward.
It's probably And for everybody, not just Dick, but any changes should go through Kevin so that we have one point of contact. Because if each, each of the four of us try to contact the police chief, or the fire chief, or the heads of any of the departments, we're going to be taking up a lot of their time. I think if we forward our comments to Kevin, he can talk with his department heads.
I need, I need to talk with the person to understand, and I simply give it to them, and they can make a correction. But sometimes I don't have the information.
But Kevin can get it for you.
What's that?
Kevin can get it for you.
Kevin's not getting the things done fast enough. We have to help him.
I, I think he probably should be given a chance to do it. I think everything's been coming out to us in good shape, so I just hate to have us, the four of us, hit each of his department heads with any questions we may have. It just, I think, creates extra work, then they have to get back in touch with him. He may want to get back in touch with us and share something. I think we should just let him serve in his role and have the board go through Kevin wherever possible.
Dick, or questions in this one?
Okay, so the wording, does the wording look good?
Yeah. I had someone point out to me, there's apparently a mistake in my wording here. It suggests that there are 11 in-vehicle radios. I think, I don't think that's true.
We're not on that one yet, Dick. We're on the one above it.
Police cruiser.
The police cruiser.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The article allows the town to resume its annual
I have a two pager up here, and I didn't go to the top.
No problem. Does the police cruiser wording look good?
Beginning with 25, yeah, right. Okay, I think, I think so. What did the chief say?
So
Did he get to you? He didn't get to me.
So I, chief, before I submitted this, we, I had your input, chief. Look, chief and I talked about it. It was basically the same. I added in here the Topsfield Police Department, which was a comment that Mam Chair in her reddits said, which standard, which is a great point. So we added in there the police department. But yeah, so basically, I know, chief, chief, so I talked to the department heads. I said basically that I'm going to be distributing a version two out to the select board and to the department heads at that point. Once I had your comments to see if the language is okay.
Thank you.
I was going to incorporate any further comment.
Got it. So there isn't how the change, I'm not sure we want to keep making a lot of changes here now. We want to, we want to accept as many of the changes as we can that are in here already. However, as part of writing the letter last week, I came across the fact that we purchased a cruiser. And I said, oh, yeah. So that wording that I gave the chief is not accurate. The town did not fund a new cruiser. In other words, we purchased one in April about a year ago. So we actually did purchase one last year because it was funded the previous year. But last year, at town meeting, we didn't fund a cruiser. So that word purchase is wrong. It should be
So you just change it to fund?
That's fine.
I mean, if you're, technically, it's a big difference.
All right, so with just that one
Oh, I looked at your bills. Yeah, so it should be fund.
Everything else is good?
The red line, is the red line okay?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll just change it to fund.
Otherwise, I think the red line, I think the changes are great.
All right, now on to police cruiser radios.
Sorry, yep. So apparently, this thing is not accurate. Something has to be done here. You have to change the wording around if that's the case. But it needs to be checked first, because it does say, it does suggest that we're going to upgrade the 11, if you would, the 11 in-vehicle radios. We don't have 11. I don't think we have all 11 have radios in them. As a matter of fact, we don't have 11 vehicles. We have 10 vehicles at this point, so it's patently wrong. Something has to be done. So just, I would say
Where's 11 anywhere?
Well, it's in the sentence, but if you remove, because all it's saying is this is part of a multi-year program, right? So if you remove the number 11, and just say, this is the second part of a multi-year program to upgrade the department's in-vehicle police radios.
I'm sorry, I was totally missing the 11.
I don't think the word 11 is vital.
Oh, I see.
And therefore, simply by removing it, then it becomes correct, and you don't need that level of specificity anyway.
But that's not really true, because the program is to do 11.
Yeah, but my point is, until you get to the third part.
Okay.
I mean, what happens if one of the two police cruisers smash into each other in downtown, and now you only have nine police cruisers, or whatever that number is? I don't think you need that number in there. We are still correct. We're still honest. Particularly because your issue is we don't have 11 police radios right now, or 11 vehicles.
I'll chat with you.
So how are we incorrect or in any way misleading if you just remove the word 11, I guess?
Just take the 11 out, but I'll chat with you at some point. All right, I'll get your call.
Major, major, one minor tweak to that last sentence. So I think radios plural should be radio single, and then make replacements plural.
Yes, that is true.
Good. Take the S out. Is that what you said? Yes.
Yeah, police radio.
The end of radio and put it at the end of replacement.
Right.
Are anticipated in future years, right? Yes, as well. I added that. That was an addition I put in myself. I hope that's okay. When I read it, I didn't want people to think this was the end of the two-phase program, because we know it's, we have future requests coming, so.
Okay, but doesn't that sentence that we were just talking about before that say the same thing? This is the second part of a multi-year program?
Second could be the end. Multi-year could have been occurring.
That's true. That's true.
I was just behind that.
I'm fine with the wording, if everybody else is.
And did you want me to take, I took out 11 in the
Yes.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, the fire station roof.
So one thing in the next, and I'll just, we can cover this right now, because there's about four or five that are like this. Looking at old warrants and looking at existing ones we had, I had, I put in there a transfer inappropriate in the recommendations side. I know, Mr. Gant, you had put in there a few of those rays. And so I just, I kept transferring there, but I made the note so we could discuss it, what the appropriate
So there's almost two different formats that we would typically use with the recommendation, or that the FinCom uses with the recommendation. And the simple format is when there is one source that we can specifically point to. And then we kind of combine at the very beginning, the source and the appropriation. When there are multiple sources, it's very awkward to try to put those multiple sources together with the appropriation itself. The appropriation is a certain amount of money, but the different pieces are each different pieces of money. And so we first do the appropriate, when there's multiple sources, we first do the appropriation, and then later down, we do the the funding. So when we do the funding, it's in there that we, in this case, most often do the transfers. And that's where we should do the transfers. The transfer should not be in that first, in the beginning of that sentence. They're only in the place where we say the transfers. Now, an example of a place where the transfers doesn't work, and we don't do it, is Article Third, because in Article Third, we do do a transfer from Article Two, and we do a raise and assess. So they're not all transfers. So that's good. It's correct in Article Third. But the same format from Article Third is appropriate for all these others. So I, it's really, it's really necessary to take that transfer out of there.
So is it okay for any of those that have multiple funding sources, because there's a few this year, obviously, then to say, recommended that the town vote to appropriate a total sum of 55, and then the transfers come in after that?
That's right.
Okay, I, okay, perfect. Then I'll do such. Is that, if the rest of the committee is comfortable with that?
That's fine.
That's fine. Yep.
I didn't notice the distinction, because in earlier ones, when it's a single source, it does say to transfer inappropriate.
Which is right, because it's simple to do it, because they're both the same. The appropriation and the transfer are the same amount of money, and it's very clear.
Yeah, I had just never noticed the distinction, so that's fine with me.
So we save a little time. Any of those that have multiple, where I have a note next to it, I will, I will just eliminate the word transfer or to, or transfer and, I'll just say to appropriate.
Yeah.
Further red line on that, our recommendation, okay with everyone?
Let me just talk to the recommendation for a minute, because I see they're in there. The original time that we began to put in the explanations, we recognize that essentially what it says is, if this article is approved, it would, it would fund. In other words, that's why the word will is so often replaced with would. In other words, this article would, if funded, if approved, rather, if approved, would fund. And that's the concept. But anyway, you got it that way. There's just a comment.
So, okay.
Looks fine to me.
I'll accept the changes in the recommendation and in the comments below, as seen.
Jen, do you feel very comfortable with the description of the roof, the entire asphalt shingle roof on the first part of the building and the rubber membrane roof on the back part?
No, I, no, I changed that in my comments to Kevin. It's the entire roof, both all asphalt and rubber.
Well, it does I know we didn't have a chance to talk, chief, today when I got, I did see your email coming. So the original edits that came in said the front roof on the asphalt, what was put in here, at least it should, let me read it again. The entire asphalt shingle pitch roof on the front part of the building. So the front part of the building being the, because the way it was broken out in the comments back to me, the front part of the build, referenced just the back part of the building. And so we know it's not just the front pitch, it's the entire pitch. So I tried to building.
Yeah, I would just say the asphalt roof and the rubber roof. That's all. Make it simple. Yeah.
Are you okay with that? No, you're, I tried to tweak this a little bit from the recommendation that you gave me, so I was trying to be clear, but I
Well, because originally, the price, the original price we got was for only the front of the front roof. But then, when he looked at it, he, it wasn't much, it was like $4,000 to do the rest of it, so.
Is the entire roof being replaced?
Yes, both asphalt and rubber.
So I just wonder why it's vital that we break down what the roof is made up of, because it's, and this is, I guess, a question for Kevin more than anybody, because it sounds like it's causing confusion by, you know, explaining to us what the roof is made of. Ultimately, the whole roof is being replaced. Why do we really care what it's made of?
Yeah, the project changed in the middle of it, so that's a good point, actually.
Would it be okay if I wrote it this way? The article would fund the replacement higher asphalt shingle roof and the rubber membrane roof on the back, in the rubber membrane roof, period. Project would also include replacement of the insulation under the rubber membrane.
I think so. I think it's good to say both the asphalt and the entire roof, and then explain that it's both the asphalt. Because somebody who knows the building, and there are people who do, are going to ask questions about, I don't know where we put that membrane roof on. I don't know. How, is that really being replaced? So you got it right in there with a couple of words, I think clarifies it. And it also helps people understand why the cost is that much. Because as soon as you see the rubber membrane, you know that that's a big deal with insulation.
Kevin, maybe you and Jen could just touch base and get the wording incorporated into the next version for us?
No problem.
Thank you, chief.
Under Public Works Building HVAC, same thing as we discussed. I'll take out the comment and delete the transfer.
Yeah, I have no problems with that.
And then accept the rest of the recommendation red line section.
Sounds good.
Looks good.
Excellent. And then same thing at the Public Works, multipurpose tractor. So, again, deleting the comment, deleting transfer and.
This one had me a little confused, Kevin, because 114 doesn't add up to 172. So it leaves me, because we were very precise in the other one, saying X amount will come from this source, that source, this source, but this says it's 172, and then we appropriate 114. So I'm assuming there's the trade-in of a truck involved, but I think clarifying, so it all adds to 172 might be good.
I, your notes, Mam Chair, I got yours first, and I incorporated it a little bit differently. I didn't, I put in the description that 58,000 that will be used from Chapter 90 funds. And so my understanding is we don't need a vote of the people to be able to appropriate those funds. Those funds come in, and the department and the select board of the town are able to distribute those funds accordingly.
Is the 58,000 written in here?
So I had, I had put in there, under the italicized section at the end, a comment that's basically, because we were, I only put 114 in the original one, if you remember correctly. It just said for the 114, the recommendation. I then put in the description that it was $172,000 piece of equipment, 58,000 of that coming from Chapter 90, 114 coming from free cash. I then received I then received Mr. Gant's comments and I incorporated his, um, to try to be more consistent. The use of any other available funds, I think, may have been a placeholder by Mr. Gant. Um, and I can spell out that it's the funds from chapter ninety. But again, I, I was cautious not to put in the motion and recommendation, um.
Right, right.
The fifty-eight.
We're not going to transfer, so.
Yeah, that's fine. I just don't see the fifty-eight thousand anywhere on my copy.
I can put, what I can do is I can put back in the sentence at the end that I took out, which talks about the fifty-eight thousand dollar, a hundred, seven, of the hundred and seventy-two thousand, fifty-eight thousand will be from chapter ninety funds.
Oh, okay.
And one fourteen. I can add that back in. I took it out just to be consistent.
I think the motion ha, the notion has to be fixed, though. Uh, you, you're absolutely right. We don't have to s- talk about the transfer. However, the FinCom needs to have a complete message when they do the recommendation. And I may have to work on the wording here, but instead of and to use any other available funds, would say, uh, to transfer the sum of that, uh, and with, uh, fifty-eight thousand, and with the use of fifty-eight thousand from chapter ninety funds, something to that effect. And, and with the use of fifty-eight thousand. So you're not, you're not doing anything. It's a, it's a, an information thing. You're not transferring it. Um, but you're telling it, you're, you're telling people where it's coming from.
So and the use of other available funds, such, um, specific, uh,
And with the use, and with the use of fifty-eight thousand dollars of chapter ninety funds.
Because I think that way it's.
That may not be the best way to do it, but on a fly, that's what I, that's my wording on a fly.
All right, I'm not.
Well, yeah, I, I, I agree. I think it's important that the, that the fifty-eight thousand dollars be included as coming out of chapter ninety. So that people can see how you get the one seventy-two.
Okay, any other comments in that article?
Uh, I didn't check the wording here with, um, with, um, Gary. Um, did, did, did you by any chance, uh, check the wording with Gary, Kevin?
Um, I did send this out to Gary, um, for his review and I have not received comment back on it.
Okay. Um.
Well, let's leave it that Kevin then will touch base with Gary and make sure Gary's comfortable with that description.
Okay, so, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, but, um, we're, we're gonna have, because it's written here, we, we need to be careful. The last sentence says, "The tractor will also be used to haul mowing equipment in the park, schools and town common." Um, here's the, here's the issue we have to be careful of. If I can, if I can buy a tractor today to haul this equipment for twenty-five thousand dollars, and I can't imagine it costs that much, I, I don't know what the tractors are these days, but let's say that's the case. I can clearly see a resident, especially those who know landscaping, I think I'm one of them, saying, "Why are you using a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar piece of equipment when you can buy a tractor for blah, blah, blah?" So I think, I think we have to be careful with that wording and, and here's a reason that we might do it. If in some ways Gary can say, "I can cut all the grass in half the time. I'll save this many man hours doing it, woman hours, whatever the people hours." Um, and that calculates to this much, so therefore it's worth it to put this load on this tractor. But I, I, somebody's got to do some numbers before we put it, that sentence into the bottom there.
And I, the one, I think that the, uh, the, the only concern I would have is, is sometimes it's fluid. And to say that we know in a warrant article, fixed amount of hours.
I'm not trying to say that we put it in there. What, what, what I'm saying is if there's justification, we're not going to write the justification and we'll put the sentence in. When somebody stands up at town meeting and says, "I don't understand why you're using a hundred and seventy thousand dollar piece of equipment and you can buy one." "Oh, well, we did a calc, we didn't, uh, we didn't evaluate a cost benefit analysis. And because we do it this way, we are, we're going to reduce this many, um, uh, labor hours to maintain our grass through the summer and therefore only going to hire two part-time people instead of three." Well, whatever it is, is, but it needs to be, it needs to be justified because patently on, on the surface, it does not make sense. But it can be justified. I don't know. And we tell people writing how it's justified, but if they ask, we can explain how it's justified.
But I, I, I guess I don't understand what you're saying because it looks like the main purposes of this tractor are those things before the sentence that you're talking about. And so I, my counter to you would be, are you suggesting that I just leave it in a barn and use some cheaper piece of equipment to do that? I mean, if it's not doing anything else and we need it for these bigger, more important things, what is wrong with saying we can also use it for these other minor things? That sure, we could use a much cheaper piece of equipment, but we're not buying this thing for that. But as long as we have it, we can use it for that. I, I would, I would like to add that the way this thing sounds, it's a, it, it's a trailer that use, used to haul mowing equipment. And, and, and that, and that is certainly not what this piece is all about. This piece is actually about plowing and blowing snow and sweeping the roads and all kinds of other stuff, okay? Uh, the, being able to haul mowing equipment is, is almost incidental to what the purpose of the tractor is.
Should we just?
I think that needs to be clarified.
Could, should we take out the sentence? Is it causing more confusion? I think people can understand the sentence before it.
One, one thing then that we had a seventy thousand dollar tractor in original warrant request. Talking with Gary, we removed the seventy thousand dollar piece of equipment that he was requesting to replace an older piece, an older tractor. The older tractor is still in service. It's not great, but it works. And this will be sort of the, the piece, it will improve how quickly we can deliver the services, um, from a ground side. Um, and it, I'm not, I didn't want to put directly in there seventy thousand dollars because there might be a need for that in a couple of years when that other piece fails. But, um, the cross, the, the cross, um, the ability that this piece has to cross multiple, uh, departments to provide multiple, uh, frontline and then secondary support, um, is kind of the real just behind it. These, at a high level, these are the three things that it, it hits in those three departments. I mean, I can elaborate more in detail. I could kind of keep it at this level and be prepared to answer questions on the, on the floor if needed. Um, but whatever your preference is, I can do whatever you, your desire is.
My view of that paragraph just says, "Listen, this thing's going to be used for a lot of different stuff. These really big jobs and also these minor jobs." That's what that paragraph says to me. And I don't have a problem highlighting to people, these are all the things it's going to be used for. Big things, little things.
That's precisely the point, and I don't think anybody's disagreeing, uh, amongst ourselves what it's going to be used for. I just want to make sure that, uh, w- we can, uh, feel good about the fact that we're spending a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for something more than hauling, um, moving or mowing equipment around. I'd, I'd take the last sentence out and let it stand where, where it will, Kevin. Uh, because you are going to use it for that anyway, but I don't think you need to, uh, I don't think you need to throw that. I mean, if you, you want, you can even say something even more vague, that it will, you know, whatever. Be used for other purposes as needed.
I, I'm not sure that that last sentence adds anything. And if it generates any consternation or makes people question.
I, I have no problem removing it altogether. I, I, my, my objection was more to the idea that we needed to quantify that in terms of money or something. But if it's, I would agree with you, Lynn. If, if people are felt better by its removal, then, then I'm a hundred percent fine with that as well. And again, if questions come up, we clearly are ready to speak to other uses if need be.
Exactly. And sometimes that even adds more when you pull that out of your pocket to say, "In addition to everything I've told you, it also comes with Ginsu knives." It's like, it can also do this. So, you know, it's over and above. Don't answer yet, kind of thing.
So it's out.
Took it out.
All right, so we'll remove the last sentence. Take it out.
Okay, fire sprinkler.
So I just, I'm sorry, just for clarity purposes on the recommendation, we're okay with that language for accepting purposes tonight. I'll add at the end of the recommendation, something about the fifty-eight thousand dollars, um.
From chapter ninety.
Yes.
Yeah.
Fire sprinklers on the red line? Okay, on the, um, the.
I'm fine with what you had.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Um, I, um, I, um, last year I, uh, began working on the, uh, the explanation because it was squirrely and I made some changes. I apologize. I have, uh, largely rewritten, not all the content is there, but it's readable, uh, for the explanation on that. This is not the time to talk about it. Uh, I, let's get it in our next edit. But I, just to let you know, there's, there's a whole bunch of rewriting explanation. I have no other comments about other parts of it, though.
Okay, Public Works Pickup Truck.
So, um, Mr. Gant admitted in, in inclusion of the trade in or sell of the two thousand nine pickup truck, which this will be replacing in the first paragraph and in the recommendation. I put it in, but highlighted it with a comment. Um, just my, my curiosity was is that in this, as a motion, our intent is to trade that vehicle in. We're, I think we're going to get eight thousand for it, six thousand for it, something in that range. Um, but is it appropriate to have that in the motion? I don't know. We have, I haven't done one of these with you folks, so.
Reason, it's all kind of like transparency, but the, the warrant tells the public what's going to go on at the meeting. Now, I can't believe that this would be an actual case. However, somebody reads it and, "Yeah, I agreed the schools. Okay, okay." What? They're going to buy a new one? Huh. I wonder what's going to happen with that. Okay. He doesn't care. Somebody else reads it and says, "Oh, they're going to trade in that two thousand nine? That's a beautiful truck. I remember when we bought that. They shouldn't be trading that in. They should be giving that to, to, uh, the other department because that's such a great, that was the greatest truck. They, they, they built that one with, the point is, you got to tell people what's going on and you're not going to get into trouble. Somebody could complain if the warrant, not the recommendation, because the only thing that's official is the warrant. If the warrant doesn't say trade in and we trade it in, it's like, wait a minute, you sold an asset of the, of the town in order to, you know, whatever you do. You shouldn't have sold that asset. It should have been kept. You didn't tell me you were selling it when I went to town meeting, or I didn't go to town meeting because you didn't tell me about it. So it, it just needs to be in there.
Do we have a dollar figure, Kevin, for the new truck? Because before we've always said, "Here's the sum that we want to spend and it's going to be funded with these components." So I see, um, we're appropriating forty thousand, but are we actually spending fifty thousand on the truck? Because ten thousand's coming from the trade-in?
Forty-eight, I believe is the number. I think it's forty-eight, Lynn.
Forty-eight.
I believe that's the number. I don't, I could probably, if you gave me a minute, I could probably verify for certain.
That's okay. Whatever it is, though, do you think for consistency's sake, because we're saying how much we're spending on everything, do we need them to give us approval to spend forty-eight thousand with twenty thousand coming from, you know, the transfer and twenty thousand, you know, cemetery fund and the remainder through the pickup?
Great question. I, I think this is the only, it's certainly one way we could look at. I think in this case, slightly different because the trade-in happens at the time of the, the sale. So they take it off the invoice. So the number on the, that will end up paying on the contract will be forty thousand dollars, less that pickup, um, taking that forty. Though I think it, it, from a contract purpose and what we would be approving would be that forty, um, thousand. Because we won't be, in other cases, like on the chapter ni- uh, ninety-one, we're going to have to pay that its entirety and then we're using different buckets to cover that. One's needs town approval, one doesn't, and those two are coming in.
Okay. So we're buying this through the transfer from free cash, the transfer from, or twenty thousand from the cemetery trust fund and funds obtained through the trade-in of a two thousand and nine pickup.
I, I would prefer to take the words, uh, or sell out in both places. And I would like to see the forty-eight thousand dollars to be listed there as the cost of the new truck.
Could we, could we list the, the, uh, cost? Uh, uh, highlight the cost in the explanation?
Yes, if that makes.
Is that all right?
I, I think, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be all right.
Okay.
I just think that number ought to be there.
Yes.
So that, so that, so that we know, so that everybody knows what we're paying for the truck.
On the other hand, they also want to know how much it's going to cost them in taxes, so to speak. And so the, in other words, the, the funding is the things that they think about for taxes. And so the things that are left for that are twenty thousand, part of which is taxes, part of which is a revolving fund. But at least they know what that, that, that's the, in a sense, how much is it going to cost me directly, they know. So I think both things are important. The forty-eight thousand and then obviously the, the things that we have to do, which is how it's going to be funded.
Okay with that, Kevin?
Point of saying he doesn't like the word sell in there. Are we just trading in the truck?
I mean, it gives us a little flexibility if like we go back to them once we get the approval and they're like, you know what? We're going to give you three thousand dollars. You know, we don't want to be stuck to whatever that, because, I mean, if they're savvy, they'll pay us. They'll give you a thousand.
I don't have, I don't have a big deal about it. I, I, I think we ought to trade it in or sell it, whatever you can do. But just, I, I don't care if you leave it there. That's, you make a good point. If I'm the dealer and I go, "Ha ha, I know by the vote of your town that you have no choice but to trade this in." One dollar.
He's that savvy that he's reading our warrant. The guy deserves to get what he gets from us.
I'd go back and say, "Well, I have forty thousand dollars to spend on it, so if you want a sale."
That's when you go to a new dealer. But yeah, the reason we did the sell is to have the flexibility if something happened.
Yeah, that's right.
Kevin, do you have enough to work with there then, with those comments?
I'll, I'll chip away at it a little bit. I'll, I'll, I think, Mr. Gant, you did, I think you might have given me some comments on that one too. So I'll, um, I'll, I'll put some work to it on the next version that comes back to.
And you'll take out the last sentence there, I guess, that says anticipated that, because we're going, it's part of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The last sentence.
It's already in the motion.
Yeah, it's already in the motion.
There's no anticipation. It's, it's a, it's a given, so to speak.
Yeah, my, my, and, you know, the only, only hedge I would make on that, and I, I'm fine putting that in there is if something does come up like you suggested, Mr. Gant, where, um, all of a sudden we identify immediate need and we need to, we can't trade and sell it. We need to use it for, you know, whatever. Um, not saying we would. This would tie us to having to dispose of that vehicle versus the ability to, to change, if we could still come up with the funds and make it happen in other ways. Not to cover that additional eight thousand. Not saying that would be the case, just from an operational standpoint, it just gives us a little bit more flexibility. But I'm fine because the intent is to trade that in. There's no doubt about that. It's not a.
What ties us is the motion, not the italics description.
Right, exactly right. That, that's, that's core, that's why I, I, in my comments, I said, "Should this be down below versus in the motion itself?" Um, the trade.
Let's move, let's move on. Good defense, Kevin. Let's move on.
Here we've already lost Marshall.
All right, I'll, I'll, um, accept the changes as written and, um, I'll come back with maybe some further, um, adjustments on that to, as discussed. And if anyone had, any, any, if you all have, have anything in addition you'd like me to incorporate after this, let me know as well.
Okay, fire alarm panel.
Looks good. I only had a, I had a question as to, uh, we, we need to understand how bad it is right now so we can be able to answer the status. You mean, if there's a fire in the library, we're going to lose the library because the thing doesn't work? We just have to know the, the, the degree to which it's crippled.
So it's next. Yeah. No, actually, I have, I talked to Laura, so I can give you folks maybe, while it's fresh, I can give you a quick update if it's helpful. On the fire panel, um, it's working. It currently works. Um, it is not for security purposes. Security at the building is a separate, um, panel, different piece of equipment. This is purely on fire safety. Um, and for the reasons listed in there, in the description of why it's imperative that we look at it, is that from a, uh, life safety, it could fail at any moment based on its vintage and the fact that, um, any for, any failure would cause us to have, um, probably an emergency repair, which would cost us more money in, in, in the long run. There'd be preemptively going through the older equipment and replacing it as needed.
So those are all good things to speak to, but that doesn't need to change any of the wording?
The way I understand it is, we can't, we couldn't come up with enough money to fix it because the parts are not available. Uh, it's not maintained. Uh, it's not maintained and the parts are not available.
I mean, it says right there, the model is discontinued, the parts are discontinued, support is discontinued. And the last sentence already says, and it's becoming, it's breaking down. It's literally overheating and is physically compromised. So the thing is half broken or whatever percentage broken from a vendor that doesn't make it or its parts or support. I think they make a, the wording, as I look at it right now, seems to make a pretty good case.
No question about it. I agree totally.
The only question is what happens? And I think we have, I don't know what happens if it breaks because based on what Marshall just said, we are.
Well, we can. We're going to town meeting with it.
If we were in normal times, what we would do is without COVID, the library is open. We either shut down the library for no public access while it's down or do a fire watch at the building. Um, we've talked with Chief Collins Brown. Um, her, her belief is we do not need a fire watch in off hours. So it doesn't need twenty percent because there aren't people in there. However, if we had a fire, we don't have the alarm system. We could lose a lot of valuable historical documents, um, et cetera.
We're going to do it. The only question is to be able to answer at town meetings, if there are questions about how bad it is and what, what you would do. Sometimes it just goes into a spiral and the answer would be this, that we would have to do an emergency. We'd have to request a reserve fund transfer from the FinCom in an emergency and within a week, put it in and perhaps have the library partially closed or closed for that week until we got it in. That's the answer, based on what I heard. I don't know how long it'll take to get, but I'm going to guess a, a week.
And we, and we won't be sitting with town meeting with, with, uh, with, um, socks in our mouths. We'll be able to talk about it. So, um, Kevin will, Kevin will, uh, describe that process.
Socks in our mouths, Boyd.
I will bring a sock now, just in case that's where we end up.
Okay, next one. Security camera in the library.
Um, just an update on the language on the bottom of it. Um, uh, there was a different, a little bit different description. Um, this is Mr. Gannon's modification to it, which I'm fine with, um, if, if the rest of the board is.
Yep.
Yeah, looks fine.
Looks okay to me.
And is it, and it's okay with, and it's okay with, um, Laura?
I've sent the warrant out to her. If she has any issues, she'll let me know and I'll let you know. Um, but I did describe, I talked to her. I, I read it to her and described what, what the changes were. Um, so she didn't have any, she just wants.
And she should be very clear then on answering the, the, the comments that I have there, not, not in writing here, but be able to do them for town meeting for us. And we should understand and put it especially at town meeting.
Again, I'll delete the comment by giving you an answer. So the, um, the security cameras are for the interior of the building, in the public spaces. It's for the entrance into the building on the exterior and in the, uh, the, uh, employee parking lot. And it's going to be accessible, um, to employees on their desktops in the office. And so if anyone's at the circulation desk and they see somebody go behind somewhere and they want to see what's happening, they could pull up a camera and be able to see what's happening in that public space. Um, we'll have to put something up in different locations saying that you're on camera, that we have a video, uh, so that people know that they're being taped, um, to make sure that there isn't any issues from, from that end of it. But, um, it's, it's similar from, and I know the question was about job descriptions. The way Laura described it is it's similar to if somebody saw somebody go somewhere and they wanted to see what was going on, getting up, walking over and taking a look. Um, and that she has spoken with her whole staff and none of them have voiced any issues. They're all excited to have that additional layer of security. So I don't think we'll have any issue on that front.
I think those, um, signs saying that you're under video, um, they also have to be on the outside of the building so that before someone enters, they know that they will be surveyed.
And we'll have those cameras there anyway, so we'll have to do it because they'll be on that camera as soon as they get on the property.
Could I just ask, you, you said on the desk. So just, just for, are they planning to have at the entry circulation desk a, uh, a video showing the cameras are being able to, and, and then secondly, on the second floor, having another one doing the same thing? I'm trying to figure.
So the way it works is that the camera goes to a single system where you can actually pull it up on, even on your phone if you have, if you have access to it. And you can actually in real time be able to watch with those cameras what's going on. So you can pull up camera one out of the master, wherever you're sitting. You can be in Laura's office, you can be at circulation. You could be looking at the same time, at the same video.
So it's not monitors. It's a, it's a computer thing that you log into from any random computer. Well, not random, but yes.
Okay. So it's not, it's not going to be monitored. It's going to be used as, as to help, to help, and it's going to be recorded.
That's right. So it's an as needed.
Good, good. That's good.
And a determined. So then the, uh, Boston Street Water Storage Replay, uh, Tank Replacement, uh, Evaluation and Design, um, being consistent with what we're calling it. Thank you, Madam Chair. We, we inserted water, um, in a couple of places. And then we're more specifically put in there retained earnings of how it's being funded, uh, in the motion. And then same thing in the, in italicized, added the word storage to be consistent. And the word went from leak to leakage, um, in the italicized section as well.
Yeah, it looks fine to me. Anybody else?
Great.
I, I, I've been up there and looked at that tank and I'll tell you, if any, and if you guys have not seen it, it will make you throw up when you look at it because there are at least ten or fifteen leaks all the time.
Get scared that you're too close to this thing and it might burst.
It looks, it looks like it could dump all that water on the town of Topsfield at any time. So.
If you do visit, I ask you bring some bubble gum and duct tape and.
It's right.
Back with you, find that hole and put it up.
And your mouth socks.
It is awful.
Not to panic.
But I, I, I do want to, uh, give credit to Greg Crom who, who, who's been monitoring that and, uh, who's up there myself. Like, yeah, chance to take a look at it. It's in, it's, it's a vintage piece of, um, of storage equipment. And, um, he's done a great job his best he can to, to, to solidify it with patches and here and there. But it's, it's certainly past its prime. That is for sure.
We're going to have our own version of the Great Molasses Flood, if that.
So I, I also have a suggestion in there, not necessarily to work on now, but, uh, suggestion is to add in the explanation an estimate of the total project. This is always what, uh, somebody is going to come up with for good reason as to what the total is. So I know that this, it gives jitters to people like Greg that come up with an estimate, but the estimate need will be big. It's be, the, uh, the, it'll be an estimate of range. And that may be a very big range because it needs to be, but something should be in there to give people a sense of how much this is going to cost.
I don't know if you need to put that in the warrant article, however, because, uh, Greg is going to be at that meeting. There will be other people at that meeting that will be able to answer that question and, uh,
It's just that they read the warrant before they go. Some people read the warrant and they answer the question before they ask it.
Would it, I mean, I'm fine. Whatever direction the board would like me to take, I could split, split it down the middle. I could reference that it is part of our long-term capital plan for replacement, which can be referred to.
Nope.
Okay.
I wouldn't put in anything.
Do nothing. If you're going to put that in, don't put that in.
Just an idea. That's fine. Um, it's, I'll, I'll leave this in and, um, I, 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 I'll put in a red line. Mr. Jackson, maybe some wording, as we talked about, if you prefer, we strike it maybe the next time we meet on the eleventh.
Decide whether to keep it or not. Good.
Just so that we don't keep kicking cans down the road. How does everyone else feel? Do you want to put in a number like this is going to cost us nine million dollars at this point when we don't know?
I would rather.
It's a range. It's going to be a range.
I'd rather leave it out too.
I don't think, I don't think it needs to be in the warrant article.
Do we really? Yeah. I mean, particularly because I, we don't really know that number, do we? We don't really know that number.
I think we'll have a lot more dialogue around that number when it's purely just an estimate.
You could say somewhere between six and eight million, but the fact of the matter is I don't think it needs to be there at all.
And then what happens if two years down the line, it turns out to be ten million? And now we're liars because we said six to eight.
No one will hold it up.
All right. So I think the sense of the board is to not put it in.
Fair enough. We'll leave it as is then.
Next.
Copper Mine Road Improvements. Uh, Mr. Gannon added in there a little more specificity around the actual section of the road. Um, put in the word Topsfields and then, as you can see, some other just kind of, uh, clarification pieces throughout. Any issues with those? Are those fine to accept?
No, they're fine.
Yeah, they're fine.
Needs get in there, by the way. Not that it's a big deal, but, uh, would fund resurfacing for a portion of the Copper Mine Road. I, I don't have a problem leaving needs, but it almost seems a little bit awkward. Maybe I put the wording in there, but it seems awkward to me. Just resurfacing for the portion of Top, Copper Mine Road.
Yeah, I would take out needs.
I think that's actually, I, 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 yeah, I did copy and paste that one in, but I, I agree. I think that with the patchy we did last year, um, it certainly will need and should have that treatment at some point. We could, I wouldn't say at this moment it's dire need. Although there's thirty-three residents, uh, households probably that would disagree with me on that, but that's.
Can I just ask, where's Fishbrook? I, I've never heard it referenced before when we've been talking about.
When you go into Copper Mine Road, just before you get to the houses, there is, uh, little stone walls on either side. That's Fishbrook. Goes underneath that. It's a culvert that you go over when you enter the community.
Okay.
But that's, that's a problem. That's the town boundary.
Well, that's what I was going to say. Shouldn't we, it, it, I feel like, who, who the hell knows what Fishbrook is? Certainly some people do. Dick, you do. Probably the people who live there do. But, uh, I'm going to guess most people don't. And if Fishbrook also happens to be the town line, why don't we say town line?
And then on clearance.
In the, in the recommendation, um, maybe you want to put it in the explanation, but the, the recommendation is a very simple physical description of where it's going from to, as to where you're going to spend the money. You, you, you can try to put in the, the town line and all that. I think, I think it adds to the, the questions about, I, I just think it adds unnecessary questions.
Well, you could, you could also eliminate Fishbrook and the questions that are going to come up about where's Fishbrook. But you could say from Locust Street to the entrance of Will, uh, Copper Mine Subdivision.
I think it's clearer.
Okay.
Um, because I, the question I had, I'm like, oh, is that a smaller section? Where is Fishbrook? Are we not doing the whole street?
Okay, okay. Next.
So would you like me to, so between easement between Locust Street and Middleton and the Topsfield, uh, town line?
Uh, at the entrance to the Copper Mine Estate?
I don't, talking about the town line doesn't answer the question for anybody because they don't know where that is. But if you tell them and we're going to recover it from Locust Street to the entrance of Copper Mine Subdivision.
And my, my suggestion though, actually, if people think about it, would be to describe it in the opposite direction from the Copper Mine Community to Locust Street.
Fun.
Because, you know, it's from us where we are going out to something else.
And that kind of says, that's kind of says it's our project, not Middleton's project.
So between the entrance of the Copper Mine Subdivision and Locust Street in Middleton?
Bingo.
Yeah. I don't think you have to say even entrance, but from, from the.
Yeah, just between the subdivision and.
Subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
Locust Street. Good.
That's right.
Good.
Yeah, and it, actually, I'm just going back not to make it more complicated, but that entrance, it does tell people, we're not paving all of Copper Mine. You know, we're not going in and doing all of Copper, Copper Mine, just to make sure it's really clear to them.
We've, we've already done all that.
The entrance, yeah, but people might not know. We're very close to it, you know?
I agree.
But just so they don't think that this is enormous.
From the entrance.
I agree.
Excellent.
Okay.
Okay, ambulance stabilization. Any questions or concerns with what Kevin put in?
Nope. I have none.
I didn't either.
Um, I have to tell you though, I, I, um, I, I disagree with this. I, I, I will not be able to support it. Um, it's very foolish to try to create this additional paperwork, this additional, uh, things put together to get the ambulance. We know that we made a decision, we, the boards, a majority of the board made a decision to say, change the server zone plan. We are the primary ambulance service in the town of Topsfield. So we have to, there's no question, but that we have to do this properly. And we're going to fund ambulances when we need them. And one of the uses for capital, the capital reserve, uh, capital stabilization fund would be to do things like this, such as the ambulance. And indeed, we have enough money in it now to buy an ambulance if we need it. I think adding this complexity and all of this in a sense to trying to tighten up the, or commit the money, tighten it up, whatever else to a particular purpose that way does not make sense. We're on for it. By the way, what we are on for also, and when we did the server zone plan, it was clear to me that we need to recognize that we need to do full staffing of the fire department with full-time firefighters. We need another five firefighters to have the nine complements that make up a reasonable twenty-four seven fire department. There, there's not a lot of discussion anymore. The decisions are made. It's where we are. We just have to do it. And Jen went out and found the, um, the grant that maybe will help us fund it for a couple of years without paying anything and then come up with the funding for it. But the decisions are made. We, we are where we are and we, we've got to move forward with it. And things like the ambulance are not special. They're things that we have to get as part of our capital plan. And we have a capital reserve fund. And we can tell people that the capital reserve fund purposes include such things as ambulances. I have no problem with that. It's clear. So I think this complexity is a mistake all the way around and I, I cannot support it.
Kevin, um, rebutting opinion.
Well, I just. Leave it. I'm just telling you where I am. And, and, and as far as wording in that, it, it's fine. And I, I think it's a big thing to discuss. We can discuss it now, but I think we want to try to make it through the rest of the.
Are you?
There'd be a, a compliment. If anyone's watching this, instead of just leaving it, uh, we don't think this is a good idea. I just want to present the opposing side, um, so that we have both.
Okay.
I just, I just want, I just would like to clarify. Dick, are you saying if you, if we eliminated the, uh, the wording ambulance stabilization fund and, and replace it with a capital, with the capital funding fund, that you would agree with that?
Sure. Of course. That, that's part of what the capital stabilization fund is there is to buy things such as this. And, and when the time comes that we need it, we're going to buy it. We, we, we are committed. We, we need to do the job right. We are it. We, we signed up for it. We, we have to do it right.
And I, I'd say. I think that everything Mr. Gannon just said, I very much appreciate. I know, I'm sure the fire chief as well. Um, you know, they're doing a great work, amazing work. And, um, the thought behind the stabilization funding, we, we, we've talked about this early on, that the, the revenues now that we're seeing from the, uh, ambulance service in particular, um, are, 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 they're good. They're great. They're significant and they're helpful, right? Um, so the thought being that because those services are providing a very specific need and the equipment they need, they, and the revenue that comes off of that, it's, it's one of the few things that generates clear revenue outside of real estate taxes, things like that, that we have, um, you know, sales tax and meal taxes, things like that too. But in this case, um, within a department, the thought being carving out, in this case, the minimum of stabilization fund for ambulance is twenty-five percent. So taking the minimum amount of that revenue that comes in, that goes to the general fund, carving that out so that when we need something specific to the ambulance and fire, um, safety team, that allows us to continue to operate at a high efficiency, we have that fund set aside dedicated specifically to, for, to maintain those revenues going forward and the services we're providing, mostly, most importantly. So we've got some big ticket items coming up on the capital plan, um, from the fire department related to ambulance purchase, for example. And the hope is that we can start dedicating some of those funds, um, and keeping seventy-five percent going still into the general fund to help offset our general, uh, costs and expenses, but allowing that the fire to see a direct, um, piece of that, uh, work that they're doing that's coming into the town. So they could, they, they're not necessarily competing on the capital stabilization fund. Not that they would necessarily need to, because we could prioritize this as a team and say, this is, this is needed right now, right here. But, um, though, this is directly related to those revenues that come in and diverting a piece, one quarter of those pieces into, um, to back to the fire department for that particular need of ambulance service.
I get, I guess one of my concerns, uh, Dick, with putting it in a capital stabilization fund would, would be that, uh, we, we've got a lot of stuff to spend money on in the capital stabilization fund. And I have a hunch that the, the amount of money that we put in there from the ambulance could get watered down and used somewhere else. And I think this allows it to be kept for specific purposes that relate to the fire department.
Okay.
It, it was also part of the recommended, recommendation of the auditor and the accounting firm. Catherine can speak more. It, it was also part of the recommended, recommendation of the auditor and the accounting firm. Catherine could speak more to that. If she wanted to, but not, if not, she doesn't have to. Catherine, do you want to share?
Yeah, I just think that if there is a purpose to have a, uh, a reason to have a special purpose stabilization fund, the ambulance would be one. As Kevin was saying, there's a direct correlation between the revenue and the expense that's gonna, that's gonna be needed for this, for these funds. We had talked about revolving account, we talked about enterprise, and it came right down to what the reasons for setting aside the funds were, this seems to make the most sense.
Thank you, Catherine. Um, I, I don't have a basic problem with moving forward with it.
I, you know, I, I would also be of the mindset that, uh, as you mentioned, Dick, we have committed now, we're, we're full in to having our fire department be the, the, you know, the first provider. And so I think we need to back that up to ensure that even in tight years or with changing boards, that we provide them with the, the equipment and the, the support that they need in order to provide that service to the town. Um, so I, I don't have a problem with this fund either. And especially if we're going to give them the money anyway, if we're committing that we're gonna provide them with the ambulance when they need it, then this just guarantees that when the money comes in from the ambulance, we haven't spent it in another way because of a, an, you know, an urgent need. You know, the urgent trumps sometimes the, the very important. So, um, I, I feel secure in, in creating this to know that that money is gonna be sitting there if we need it to continue to provide ambulance service.
I would concur with that.
And if I could just add also, when I had talked to Dick Houston, our financial auditor, about this as well. Uh, you know, we talked about the bond rating and sometimes when you have this, this stabilization fund, and we have the two, we have the general stabilization and then the capital. Taking money out of those funds sometimes is not favored by the, by bond rating committees. However, when you have this type of special purpose, it's, it's almost like you're doing this with the pure intention that you're gonna be buying a thing. So it was, it felt less risky, um, in terms of, in terms of our bond rating, maintaining our bond rating.
Oh, that's good to know. Thank you, Catherine.
I'm, I missed that, how is it affect, what's affecting our bond rating?
One of the things that, that, the, the rating company, when we had S and P the last time, um, and, and previously with Moody's as well, is they look at the history of the stabilization funds. And, um, money taken out isn't always viewed favorably. Um.
Taking money out of the stabilization fund?
Yeah, they, they, they like to see money going in, reserves going in, but they do not, they don't necessarily like to see money coming out. However, when you have a special purpose, you're almost putting money in it with the idea that, that this is, we're putting the money in to buy the equipment. Once we save enough money to buy the equipment, we're gonna, this is what we're gonna do. And it's easily explained, it's more easily explained than, than any other use of a stabilization fund.
Understand.
Okay, um, I think we're good to move on.
I think so.
Okay.
So, uh, Mad Chair, sorry, I'm gonna skip the Masco's, um, recent, but they're there. I will, what I'll likely do is just for sake of keeping it consistent, I'll accept all these changes, but I'm gonna highlight all four of these so that they, we know that there's, there's really further, a lot of further edits that are necessary before, um, we take them on again.
Kevin, did we have any sense of timing from Dr. Harvey on when the articles would be back to us?
So Tuesday night, I was, days leading into it, I was trying really hard to put something together for today. Um, it got to a point where there were so many moving pieces and three different communities involved. Um, went back and asked for, I told him I was gonna pause and, and ask for an opportunity to meet with him. He subsequently emailed and said that the town administrator from Boxford had sent a similar email to him, um, as well, and that he had reached out to his Mascanomic legal team to help craft a consistent warrant article that we could use as our base, uh, to work off of. Um, for instance, the housekeeping article, it's from multiple pieces within the document. It's not one line that we can build in there and strike. So I'd be very curious to see how they present it. I did provide it with examples of how we've done warrant articles in the past, such as the zoning changes where it does build it. And I'd also indicated that if we're doing complete change to a document, typically we'll have one warrant article and it'll be an attachment at the end. I said, there's options to possibly do modifications or some hybrid of that, but I'd like to see what, you know, knowing what Topsfield expectations typically are, like to see what you come back with and we'll go from there.
Okay, and I know he's anxious to push this all forward after all the work that they did. I know the three towns have different dates for their town meetings and when the warrants need to be done. So I'm, I'm sure you're keeping him apprised of our timeframe, so.
Yep, absolutely. We'll say, I'll, I'll certainly stay on it as well, because, you know, as we continue to circulate versions and we get the rest of this tight, and we're in a pretty good spot, I feel, um, that one's gonna be kinda just out there, hanging out there that we need to get that soon and we can, and get that updated. So we'll, uh, we'll keep working. I think I told him a week, maybe a week and a half would be ideal, so hopefully soon.
The things that need to be the same between the three towns are the con, the, the actual text of what's going on. The wrappers for it, for example, the town of Topsfield in there versus the town of Middleton, I mean, the, the actual wrappers are going to be potentially different. Should they have the same touch and feel? Yes. Whether the word is exactly the same is not important. The important thing is that the wording, uh, as each town puts it, is to approve the specific things that we just voted on for this amendment. So, we, we, as, as you point out, we need to work on it, but the wrappers are different than are in place here. I have one very simple request to keep things simpler, and that is in the title of each, each of the four, to strike the word "the" and the word "district." So at least it says amend Mascanomic Regional School Agreement. I mean, we're not, that, the title is not a, a legal term, it's an eye catcher, and we want to try to keep it as reasonably simple so people understand what they're looking at.
If you're comfortable that, I'll delete that right now.
Okay.
Is that okay by the, the rest of the board?
I don't have a problem with.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
I, I would think the legal group is going to be more erring on the side though, that we all have the same verbiage. So there's no question that the three towns have all approved the exact same thing. And you might as well just develop it once and share it three ways, instead of developing three ways and having three legal departments review it. So, but we'll wait and see what Dr. Harvey comes back with.
And they're more than willing to work with us on it, which is great. So no issues there. We'll keep it moving. Five-year school bus contract, um, any issues with the red line?
Just let me, uh, for technical reasons, we know that there's a problem when the three of us are trying to do something and we have the same, uh, attorneys. They, they cannot provide essentially, uh, common, uh, recommendations to each of the towns. But, but this is not a competitive thing in a sense, this and them. So I, I think we're pretty clean on it. Relatively clean on it. Five-year contract, go ahead.
Move on.
The only, if you agree with the red line, the only ish, the only item is the comment that I copied in here from Mr. Gant around at the end of the wrapper. Um, it's, it states, or in the first paragraph, sorry, I don't know if I'm using wrapper correctly. Um, but in the first paragraph, the word town was, um, question was tri-town school district, um.
I, I don't, I don't know the answer. Yeah.
I, I know that KP had no issue with it, so I, they didn't have, they didn't point to it. But I can keep that comment in there in the version I sent. Again, I sent them the version two point oh one, so they've seen it. They haven't re, re, um, red flagged it or had any issue with it yet.
But I, I can almost discuss it in two ways there. Uh, the, the issue is for the best interest of the town, which may not be in the best interest of the tri-town. In other words, we say, I, I, and I'm not sure how you, you, it's the school committee who's kinda making the decision, but it's not, it's the tri-town, it's the tri-town union, uh, committee, I think, that makes the decision.
No.
No?
No, it's the Topsfield School Committee with the advice of the superintendent.
Right, I, so.
So there is a T T U, there is a tri-town. But it's the Topsfield School Committee.
It's a single, it's a single contract, correct?
Well, that was actually my question, um, in the words, uh, both with the food service and with this. Um, because it does say for school transportation. Um, and so I wanted to declare, is this for the Topsfield Elementary School? Is this contract just for the Topsfield Elementary Schools?
So this contract, I believe goes to all five, oh, sorry, help three communities on a five-year contract. I, I did not clarify that. I basically took the language that was provided to me, um, from the schools, tweaked it accordingly, and then presented it as such. So, uh, I'm not sure if this, if I, kind of use the scale, I'm assuming they're probably taking it, they're probably using one contract for, for the entire union. I could double check that if the.
Probably good to clarify, just.
Because questions may come up. And then, and, and I only put that in there as a question. I didn't, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, cause there are three school committees, but they all meet with Dr. Morrison, so I'm not really sure. I'm assuming that, um, Steve Greenberg is probably doing the financial analysis of the contract and then sharing it with the school committees for their, for each of their approvals. So I'm sure he's doing it in the best interest of the tri-town, um, but.
But I, in some ways, I'd rather have it say for the best interest of Topsfield, than the contract needs to be squirreled around so that we get the least cost buses to do the things that we wanna do and not an optimized bus system that also helps Tospo, Boxford, but not as much as it helps. It's, it's, I, I don't know the answer. I don't.
I will say, I have to assume there, because I know that the high school or the Mascanomic bus contract is tied, not tied contractually, but they're using the same buses, they're using the same bus drivers. So I, I have to guess that these contracts are all the same. Because when they talk about, for instance, school opening times, every time they talk about a later opening time for Masco, all the bus costs go way up because you need a whole nother second set of buses. So all that's to say, I have to guess that it's a, it's a tri-town situation.
I just emailed Steve Greenberg and asked him to let us know if it's for just Topsfield or if he's planning a negotiation with all three communities. And if he says all three communities, I don't know if that would necessarily change then the word Topsfield Town, tri-town, because I think it's, uh, it's ultimately.
Well, it would be tri-town elementary school transportation, because that's what the contract would be. It would be.
All three, just got that. Do you want me to change the words to tri-town?
I, I think it would clarify for people, um.
Why don't you wait until we get an answer back as to?
We did.
Yes, he just.
I'm sorry, you, you just gave the answer back?
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll know back. We, Steve's pretty.
Steve is quick.
Adam's on top of this stuff.
Unfortunately, Steve and I have been texting and emailing, um, pretty late in the evenings with the budget recently, so he, he's pretty good to respond, which is good.
Did you ask him about the food service too then?
I didn't. Sorry.
Well, he answered so fast, just ask him, we'll get the answer right back. By the time we get to that article, which is.
It's next, so it's coming up.
Yeah, so we'll skip it.
Right after boss.
I'm pretty sure it's the same answer, but.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the math in focus is out, Kevin, right? We'll skip onto that and go back to food in a minute.
Yes, um, so yes, so math focuses out, we talked about that, um. Let's make that one change so I can keep it going. So you, the five-year, that, I'm gonna accept all the changes on the five-year and I'm gonna change that one, assuming Steve gets back to me the next minute, um. They're just, yes, it's the same for the tri-towns, uh, food management services as well.
Okay.
So we'll change that to best interest of the tri-town school districts.
And then in the recommended, I, I would say to put those words in too, so it would be to negotiate and enter into a five-year contract for tri-town elementary school transportation?
With the recommendation, uh, it's, uh, super schools.
Is it the tri-town school district or is it the tri-town school union? Because the districts are the Topsfield.
Yeah.
I didn't say district, I said tri-town, tri-town elementary school transportation. That's what I said.
Tri-town union. I'm gonna change that over.
But you can find out from, um, Dr. Morrison or Steve what the exact wording should be, tri-town union, tri-town schools, or elementary schools.
All right, so in the recommend, I'm sorry, Mad Chair, in the recommendation, you want me to add that effect?
Yeah, I was just gonna say at the end, to negotiate and enter into a five-year contract for tri-town elementary school transportation. Because that's what they're agreeing to, a contract that provides elementary school transportation for the three towns.
If it doesn't pass in Masco, I'm sorry, it doesn't pass in Middleton or it doesn't pass in Boxford, and they go out and they do a five-year contract to the other two communities, are we tying ourselves to something here that then we can't give them the permission to do it?
I don't know. How does it work in the past? Cause this isn't the first year they've done contracts. This is just the first year they've gone beyond three years.
I don't know. And it's why, I mean, the town was their language.
When we, uh, when we met with, um, with, with Scott, one of the things that he said is that they need to get approval on all three towns for this to work.
Okay, so all three towns have to approve or otherwise it doesn't matter?
That's correct.
Okay. So your answer, Kevin, is if Middleton says no, then our yes vote has no meaning.
Then tri-town union, yeah, it is.
And then in the italics part, you could put a sentence saying, in order, you know, all three towns must.
This requires the approval of the town meetings in all three towns.
Right. And the same for the food service, same kind of changes.
Sorry, y'all. Wanna get it right once, removing pieces a few times. So it'll say contract for the tri-town union transportation.
Elementary, right? Are you putting in elementary school? This, this isn't for the tri-town Masco, this is just tri-town elementary.
I think they're formally organized as the tri-town union. And I, I think that's a spare, it's an entity, right?
T T U, tri-town union, yeah.
Oh, okay, so then it would be redundant, yeah.
Cause it's only elementary schools, so.
Yeah.
What's there? All right, so.
Well, right now, yeah.
So the union, so in the recommendation of the bus, it will say, recommendation of the town vote to authorize during the ensuing year, the Topsfield School Committee with advice from the superintendent schools of the tri-town union to negotiate and to a five-year contract for the tri-town union transportation services. And then in the recommendation of the food service, recommend, recommended that the town vote to authorize during the ensuing year, the Topsfield School Committee with advice from the superintendent schools of the tri-town union to negotiate and enter into a five-year contract for the tri-town union food service management. Or tri-town, tri-town union food management services.
You know, I, I know it's redundant. For me, it just seems to make it clear to say for the, for the elementary students or something, um.
They, they, that'll, that, that in itself, people should go in their mind that it's for all three, not just for one community. Perfect. Um, the math in focus is coming out, uh, the next version.
So, so, I just, I have, I have two different documents here. It seemed very much the same. Um, you did say for the ensuing year, correct?
Sorry, where, where are we?
Back to the five-year contracts. They, they, they both said to authorize for the ensuing year.
I was gonna do that in the next version, the, the, I'm separating.
Next.
That we talked about, yeah, yep, that will go in the next version, for sure, yep. Uh, math in focus, we're, we're moving, um, re-codification of this general bylaws. Um, Lynn, I had in there the, I know you said that if the two articles that are back to back kind of. Um, Lynn, I had in there that, I know you said that if the two articles that are back to back kind of blur a little bit into each other. So I just wanted to give you. The opportunity to maybe, um, give us some feedback or what you like to do.
Yeah. And, and you know, and I didn't reword anything and I don't know exactly what each is going to do. You know, there's a lot of information here, but it seemed like both of them had, we're going to renumber, we're going to, you know, capitalize. It repeated in both of them, things that we're going to do. So it just made it seem a little more complicated maybe than it needed to be. But not that I really care. I don't think people are going to get all uptight about this if. If the, you know, concept of it is we're trying to make it easier to use and standardize. Um, but it, it just struck out me that I, I felt like I was reading the same things in both.
And what's the, what's, why is there two different warrant articles? I should know.
So one of them talks about the, um, how, um. This was KP Law's recommendation on how to sort it. And so what they did was on the, um. The first one, it's specifically about, um, the organizational of it, the structure, um. Headed the inserting of headings and subheadings providing for consistency with, uh, mass general laws. Um, spelling and use of variation words, updating references, et cetera. Basically, this one is the headings and sub-designations, um, capitalization, just uniform style. And the second one talks about, um, in there is a numbering, I believe, right? It's, uh. Numbering and recap captioning.
There were some, there were some errors in numbering. Uh, I went through that thing page by page. And, uh, there were some errors in numbering and there's also some, um, changes that need to be made in terms of. Uh, the title says recapping of general bylaws, global revisions, strike through and underline revisions. Um, the, the, the second article or the, yeah, the second article there, uh, relates to housekeeping. Based on the work that was done in the first article.
Yeah, I always have a problem. If I don't have a, a soundbite or an elevator pitch that I could say to someone, this is basically what each of them are doing. And I couldn't tell you exactly the differences between them. They just blur for me. So. I would have to have someone else explain the distinctions made between the two articles.
After eighty-some pages of it, it's all going to be blurry.
What I would, what I would do is I'm, I plan to go through this a little more detail with KP Lock, because if you remember, there was two versions of one of these that they provided. We deleted that one out, maintained this one. This was actually the easier of the two to read, um, believe it or not. But the, um, the plan would be is I'll be as familiar with it, with those types of questions, um, ma'am chair is, is possible. And if the day of the meeting, I'm going to have Lauren Goldberg at my hip on this one. And I'm, and she'll certainly be able to explain how and why it was done this way. I leaned on them heavily on these because they've done them in a number of other communities. Um, so they have familiarity with it rather than start from, you know. As they say, don't build the wheel if someone's already, you know, don't have to reinvent the wheel. So, um, this was them taking existing language, modifying for Topsfield and then. Putting it into the warrant for us.
Can I take a stab at it? Does one actually address content? And one just structure and, and how it's presented? Because with the codification, I know that we're looking and saying some things conflict. We're not in line with state law and we have to bring it in line with state law. Um, and it's, you know, a change to one bylaw occur and it didn't tie back into another one. So now. An, an earlier bylaw is outdated or it doesn't make sense anymore because of a change we made to another. So I feel like this is like cleaning house to make sure it's current and tied in with the state. So that's more content. And the other one is more, we're going to change the way this is formatted because it's super hard to read. So we're going to renumber. Capitalize, put in headings, et cetera. So one's content and one is just make it easier to read. But I don't know if I'm just making that up.
Every time I think I understand, because first I thought, well, one is words and one is numbers, but no, that's not the case. You know, content and one is format, but if you read the paragraphs, that doesn't appear to be the case either.
I know. It's confusing. And so I was trying to find my soundbite and I was having trouble.
Together, I can say they're cleaning it up to make it more user-friendly and in line with state law. But I couldn't tell you how the two of them are different or the same. So.
Yeah. And I think that, that was my comment, Kevin. I just was, it was all blurring together.
And obviously, I mean, I'm, I can't give you the elevator pitch myself. Um, I know at the end of the day, like Marshall said. This is going to get us to where we want to be with, with the red line that was done by, um, uh, general code. And allow us to put it on the website, make it a much easier, more efficient and effective tool for people who want to be able to sort and find information. You know, if I was going to say this article represents exactly this and this represents that, you know, that's what I looked at. Lauren, probably say, Lauren, can you give us your, your, your 15-second pitch on it? Um, because. But before then I'll have another conversation with her. Coming out of this one, to ask her to help me have that elevator pitch ready for you folks.
And as much as possible, just even if she needs words to read exactly as they're reading in, in the motion, in the italics part, to put it into layman's terms.
Yeah.
And, and.
Talk to me like I'm five.
Yeah. And, and it, it, the italics part doesn't do that as much for me.
All right.
And any words that can be removed from either the warrant part or the recommendation, I would say the warrant part would be great.
All right. So I think we beat that horse.
Other than that, it's, I added in the second one. Well, I've got a couple of tweaks I, I made in the first one. Second one. Um, Lynn, you had circled capitalization on number two. Um.
Well, again, it was just getting to the main point that I kept, felt like I was reading the same thing and I couldn't make a distinction between. The two articles. So I think it's all wrapped up in that. I.
I see where capitalization's also in the first one as well as the second one, right?
And, and renumber and easier to read, uh, you know, so.
Yeah. So I think, yeah, it comes back around to, we need, we need, uh, somebody to tell us what these separately are about.
But for the purposes of the existing red line to build off of for future, the recommendation and the, the comment below, nothing glaring. I can accept those changes for now.
Yep.
Yep.
As long as we eventually get, you know, the.
An easier, better, or, or a better description in the italics. So now these look fine, but.
Like Dick said, the more of that wording we can eliminate, the better off we'll be.
Yeah, we're still struggling a little with it.
All right. I, I made note. I'll definitely go back to Lauren with that one. Um, the next one's the amend general bylaw, uh, water restriction. That was just. Some tweaks that Mr. Gant asked to be made. I'll accept that unless there's any objection.
No.
No, Kevin, as I mentioned before, it just, if we could get back from you, attachment B, because once we sent in our edits. Um, it'd be good to see the clean copy with everybody's edits in there.
Yep. Um, the next one on the recommendation, Mr. Gant, you had deleted a section of that. And, and it sort of had left it open on your version you sent back to me. Um, I left it in there. I wasn't sure what, um. I wanted to have the discussion. I just wasn't sure what we were, would be, what we were looking to do.
Any feedback on that, Dick?
You're talking about the water use bylaw.
Yes. In the recommendation, there was in your version, you said there was a section that was, uh, that was deleted after, I think. I gotta pull yours up, but it was, there was a section deleted after, I think the word town. Or amend B, and then it was the, the rest of it was deleted.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Let me pull up the, uh, pull yours.
You're saying in what we have here, I have recommendations?
If you're okay with it, I'll accept it. Um, I think in the version that, uh, that you'd sent over, the one, let me just pull it up right here. I'll just give you a second. I'll pull down that section.
Have, have you talked with Greg about this in the last, uh, day?
Not in the last day. No, I have not. So there was a under. So the plan will be a redline version as an attachment, just for everyone's sake, so that it can be easily referenced, the changes. Um, on the recommendation on the version you sent me, Mr. Gant, 1.3. It said, recommended that the town vote to amend, and then you deleted the remaining section.
Done. Gant is speechless here. I can't believe. I, I don't, I, I thought, is he on mute?
We, we can accept it. You go to the next, if you want to make edits off the next version, Mr. Gant, if there was a thought there that, that you can come back later on the next version, feel free.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see, I don't see a problem. There, there, there is a big, there is a big question about the amendment itself, potential B, if you would. Um, be, as to what we're going to do with that. And it, the, it, it's very hard to answer questions about that particular. Water use restriction bylaw. I, I have, I have a history of that. I spent some time, uh, one year. With Betty Collin and what I did is I made the prose so the prose was readable. The bylaw itself was never, was never logical. I talked with somebody else recently. They said, I don't understand this thing at all. Um, so, um. What I, what I did, what I have done, and I, I've, uh, worked on it, is, is made some significant changes in it. So at, at least it makes. Uh, more sense from a, a usability point of view, but it's very much more, I'm, I'm much more interested in it now than I was in the past. Because now I am responsible for implementing it. I have to decide what to put in the newspaper about what kind of. Uh, condition and whatever else. And there is nothing that provides that, uh, in writing. There, I, I thought that there were some perhaps rules and regulations that the Board of Water Commissioners had put in place that they hadn't. So, uh, there's questions about how you implement what's there. And anyway, two things going on. One is to try to improve the. Bylaw itself, if we want to go about doing that. And then the second thing is after the fact, uh, to be able to write a couple of. Uh, rules and regulations as to how we decide what to do under what conditions.
Are you, are you comfortable with the italicized section model?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Excellent. Um, I'll accept those then as well.
Yeah. Okay. Next.
Round water protection. Is that next?
Yeah. So those, these are planning, um, and I, I, Martha emailed me today. I, I've got to look through it, but. I'm planning mod, she told me the last time we, we met with KP on Tuesday night, um, to talk about this, the articles. And, um, she was going to send me updated versions in the, in the, in the days to come. So I might have, the next version may or may not have updates from her. But anticipate there to be some changes within those as well.
So I think the first one is really pretty straightforward. It's what's going to happen here, but, uh. It's, it's all we're trying to do. We know what we're doing, right? We're trying to make it so that it relates to all uses in the, in the district. Rather than residential ones in the district. But yes, they have to implement it. Once again, if I may though, this is an example and the previous article is an example also because when it says approve. We want to put the word, uh, this is in a recommendation, approve this article, umpty ump, as detailed in the warrant. Just for that consistency, you're going to put the word this in there, right? And, and that's true of the, of the one before that, that we just discussed. It also at the end has. In this, you want to put the word this article, but that's, that's, we can make all those changes. I think we're at the mercy of the, the planning board coming back to us with something that we can reasonably discuss on.
That's right.
These.
It sounds like it.
Yeah. So we'll just move on. So, um, doesn't look like there are any changes on this one, Kevin, really. We're still waiting for the business, um, district village.
Um, yes, sorry. Let me just get back down to it. Um. Business district, yeah, that's just, again, we'll know on the 30th of this month.
Yep.
It'll be plug and play and send to the printer. If everything goes smoothly as I made it sound.
Um, so the next one, the old highway garage transfer, that's under us. That's not planning.
Yep.
So any comments from anyone? I, I don't look, it doesn't look like anything new is in here.
Nothing new.
Okay. So we're just going to wait to get details of that from the survey.
Yep, yep. Again, plug it in play once, once everything comes together. Um, and then the, the next one's the OPEB. Um, I added in there. Um. Just some of clarifying information. I know it's standard language that's been used in the past, but I add in there 20,000 dollar increase in funding each year. Until the annual funding reaches 500,000 or outlined in the town's accepted financial policies. Um, that's my, that, that's added in there. Just, we don't need to have it. If you folks prefer not being there, we can absolutely delete it. But I was talking with Catherine Gabriel and she suggested that might be something nice to add in there. So.
I like it. I, I think it's appropriate. Uh, this, this tells people where we are. They can read the policies, but nobody's. Very few people are going to spend time simply reading the policies. And so this breaks out a certain area where a lot of money is involved. And tells what the policy is. It'll lead to the question perhaps, how much is the liability? When, when will we reach fulfillment of the liability? And that, that's another thing. But, okay.
Um, can I just make a suggestion on, on the wording?
Yes, please.
Um, it, I think it might be smoother if it says a $20,000 increase in funding each year is recommended. Or outlined in the town's accepted financial policies until the annual funding reaches 500,000? Just to break that apart.
Nice.
Then.
I like it. Let me just try to capture that.
In fact, the word or the sentence is incomplete right now.
It is. It should be is instead of our outlined. I think it'd be complete if it said is.
It's one.
It's still kind of is lacking a little.
It's financial policies. It's the annual funding, which is 500,000. Okay. Let me just make sure. I'll, I'll read it back. That's all right. A $20,000 increase in funding each year is recommended in the town's financial policies until the annual funding reaches $500,000.
Yes. Good.
Excellent. Nice job.
Good.
Perfect. Um, and then. So as we try to balance our budget, um. This is a placeholder for use of general stabilization funds. To help us, um, bridge the gap this year in the Masco numbers and what we're trying to accomplish. I took a stab at it. Um.
What's the title you're talking about?
Uh, this is transfer from general stabilization fund.
Right away the town, oh, transfer. Okay. You, okay. You passed capital. Okay.
Oh, are you okay with the capital? I didn't have any changes on those. So that's.
There were no changes. Okay.
In either of them, capital or general.
So where did you get the idea for this mechanism?
So there's a number of levers we have, as you all know, to try to find.
Did KP come up with this, this technique, this stuff or Catherine?
Did you use the general stabilization fund?
To do a transfer of the general, to do a transfer.
Do you, to, so the thought being to balance the budget this year, um, I've done, as I would refer to back to the envelope. Um, list of places that we can pull from to try to get there.
Okay.
And there's the free cash that you transferred, um, the opposite of the tax levy annually that we utilize. This is, we put $200,000 in addition last year that we took out of the, the free cash from capital. Um.
Kevin.
And.
Kevin.
Oh, go ahead. I couldn't tell what that, I was, I wasn't sure if you were raising again. Sorry. Kind of was fading in and out.
Two, two things, Kevin. One, one is what would, what the, uh, what we're trying to accomplish. And the other one is how we're accomplishing it. So I, I understand conceptually what we're trying to accomplish. We're, we're trying to use stabilization money to be able to make the budgets work this year, et cetera. That's fine. We can discuss that, whatever. I, I don't have a problem. I'm looking at the, the approach to achieving that. Where did this come from? Having a warrant article of this nature to do this?
I took a stab at it.
Okay. Oh, thank, good. All right. If you told me KP did it because they, they've been asked, a lot of people have been asking because of the COVID, you know, they don't have money, whatever the case may be. Okay, fine. Um, I think, I think we have to think about the, the approach to doing. Um, I think, I think we have to think about the, the approach to doing this. Here is one thing that we might do. And that is essentially what we would want to do is in Article Third, as part of the appropriation, as part of the funding, transfer money from the stabilization and transfer $200,000 from the stabilization fund. I mean, that, that, that's the, that's the phrase that we would put in there. But it's not that simple because in my, for this reason, to do such, you need to do a two thirds vote. So it may lend itself to similar to Article Two or perhaps adding it to Article Two that we ask for the transfer to, of that $200,000 or whatever the amount is. With the same concept of the transferring it for the purpose of Article Three. Then you can do the two thirds vote and get that over with at that point. And then go into Article Three, and it's there in Article Three to use. I think a separate, a, a separate one like this at this point, uh, I, I don't think technically it works very well.
Does Article Second need a two thirds, Dick?
Taking money out of the stabilization fund takes two thirds?
The, the, the balance transfers from cable conservation, um, that are in Article Second right now, does that need a two thirds?
No, no, no.
No, so.
I didn't want to screw up, I didn't want to screw up Article Third with a two thirds vote.
But if Article Second.
This before, so I, I don't know how to go about it. So the thought is having a mechanism to, to do the transfer. The main thought here is that it's, it's not this idea of transfer and appropriate the sum of, to reduce the tax rate. I don't think that's a, I, I don't think that's a good approach. I don't know if it's a valid, really valid approach to it.
We've, we can have Kevin go back and talk with FinCom and with KP and kind of flush this out and see what options may be relative to this.
But, but I'm going to start with, uh, I'm going to offer a, a structure to do that. And the structure to do that is in an article, it could be this one, so to speak, where the transfer is done for purposes of Article Third. And then, so now you have a problem. What are you going to do first? Well, you, you need to do this transfer before you do Article Third. So it could be perhaps put in Article, it could be put in Article Second, or as I was thinking about it, uh, last night, it could be in Article Thirty, and the town moderator changes the order of articles to take up Article Thirty uh, Second or something like that. The reason, so that you get it done before Article Third. The reason I wouldn't put it in as Article Third, uh, you know, as a new article before Article Third, is it's going to screw up our numbering forever. You know, we always know that mascanometer is five and the, the omnibus, the general budget is three and water is four. So that's why trying to find a mechanism that would, that would work, um, either by putting it into two already, or having an agreement from the moderator that he would bring that up after Article One to, to take Article Thirty, which does some kind of a mechanism. Those are my.
Can I ask you, does the free cash work the same way though? If they don't approve free cash, do we have a problem with Article Third?
Free cash is a, is a 50% vote, a, a majority vote. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, but we still, if they don't pass that, then we don't have enough money for Article Third without an override.
Right, right, right.
And we do free cash at the end. So they've already approved Article Third. Then at the end, we ask them for the free cash, and if they say no, we can't fund Article Third without going for an override.
That free cash, uh, does not relate to two and a half in, in any way in my mind. The article, the, the last article that we do with the free cash to reduce the tax levy does not relate to two and a half.
If, if we can't pull out from free cash, like in this case, we're going to be $272,000 short in order to fund Article Third that they just approved.
Okay, I guess.
Right? I, I'm trying to, um.
Say, say it in another way because I'm a little slow.
Okay, so, um, Article Third, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but Article Third assumes that we can fund everything that's in Article Third as long as we get $272,000 from free cash at the end of the meeting.
So we, in, to, there's basically the way that, yes, ultimately that's the end game of it, but there's a step that by reducing the tax rate, it's going to, it gets the tax rate rather than against the budget, but ultimately it ends up going against the budget because without that tax rate being reduced, we can't fund the budget. So it's a kind, it, the direct way to say is, is yes, we don't have that money come in, we can't fund our budget because it won't be balanced budget, but.
I think we need to talk about this.
Yeah, well, let's take it offline. It's, it's the end of the night.
Raise and assess goes against the taxes. So.
Right, and we would have to raise and assess more.
Okay, how are, how are you going to say it in Article Third?
I don't know, and I'm, I'm kind of tired, so I don't know exactly.
The, the reduced, the, the, the purpose of the free cash is to provide some relief to the taxpayer based on the amount that was taxed the previous year too much because we needed be conservative in our estimates of receipts and whatever else. As long as you say raise and assess in Article Third, then that's the amount you have to raise and assess. That's it? Huh? Okay, next, next. Oh, you're going to use some free cash to reduce the tax. Okay, fine.
It doesn't say raise and assess.
No, I'm missing. Know it all, but it seems to me it's basic one on one to me.
So, Mr., what you're saying, Mr. Gant, is even if, even if we didn't need the, to take free cash to offset the tax rate because the bound, the budget can be balanced without it. It's, we could still reduce the tax rate less than the two and a half percent. Based on that article, it says to reduce that, Article Free Cash stops the tax rate one. It's not tied to balancing the budget in essence. It, it's been, I mean, to put it in, in simple terms, it's used to balance budget in the bottom.
Returning money to the taxpayer. The, the last article is returning money to the taxpayer.
Which if we didn't return that money to the taxpayer, would have a deficit in our, in our model, which would then create the need for an override. Or reduction in capital or a bunch of other things that free cash would.
We, we, we'll, we'll talk with the, with Catherine, and we'll talk with, uh, FinCom and things like that. Okay. What you can do, what you can do is in Article Third, change, change the, in the funding in Article Third, reduce the wording that says raise and assess 15 million, whatever it is. Uh, I shouldn't say a number, but it, order magnitude. And in, in addition to the other things that are, and transfer $200,000 from free cash. That you can say. And then the raise and assess was reduced because you're able to, the article says the funding includes $200,000 from free cash. You could do that. That you can do.
I mean, I know we've, we haven't looked at the stabilization in, because of the Financial Times we're in and the crunch with Masco, we're looking at it potentially as a part of a solution. KP Law obviously has much more knowledge and experience with, with use of stabilization. I'll go back to them, and I've already wrote it in. I'll go back to and ask what they think is the appropriate mechanism for it.
We, we can in fact use stabilization. That's all right. I mean, when Catherine talks about bond, bond rating, that, that's something that gets them scared, but that, that's fine. We have to do these things once in a while. That's not a problem in my mind.
Yes, Kevin, you can go back.
We can take.
Yeah, I think we've, we, we really have to move on. It's getting late and we're missing the school committee, uh, start. So if, if I could, because Kevin can talk KP and FinCom and, and then come back to us with recommended approaches for how to incorporate that. Um, okay, it doesn't look like there's anything else, Kevin?
Just the dollars, and, um, on the next ones, that's, that's about it. If you guys are okay with it, I'll accept those changes. So just to reiterate, I'm, Mr. Gant sent me some additional edits from the version we just looked at. I'll incorporate those. Department heads will be giving me feedback as well in the days by the end of week. So I'll incorporate anything that they, I'll look at what they want to incorporate and then make adjustments accordingly if it's appropriate. Um, I'll talk with KP about what we just talked about and a few other items as well. There's a, I didn't get through my whole list at the very top, and I won't do it now, but there's a few other items that I'm going to talk with KP about, um, after I send this accepted version back to them. And then I'll have this back to you folks, um, with a new version, probably early next week, as long as I can get a hold of all the people I need to. Um, but at that point, it's maskonomics, the big one, the planning boards, items, the stabilization, potential stabilization warrant article, um, and then plugging some numbers into some other areas that are, um, unknown at this time, but, um, I feel like we're in great shape, and I really appreciate everybody's attention to this. We're, uh, we've got about one month, a li- little less than one full month till we have to go to print.
So our next time getting together then would be the 11th. So you said, Kevin, either like the eighth or the ninth, we'd be able to get another copy to review in preparation for our, our working session on the 11th?
I'll, if it's all right with you, I'll say, just like this, this, this week, I'll try to get to you before midnight on Tuesday. If not earlier, I'll try and do it earlier, I promise.
Typing this up.
Very specific thing we just, I think I put it in there someplace, and it was before this particular version. And that is our references to general law. The, sometimes it's G dot L dot. And as we found out in the recodification, they went to MGL. And you'll notice that when the schools do it, they do MGL. We need to pick one or the other, and especially if we're going to have it in our, in our bylaws, we need to pick one or the other and tell general code that they need to change their standard for us from whatever, from MGL. My suggestion is that all references in the warrant article and in our bylaws and in, uh, whatever we get from the school committee, everything is MGL instead of G dot L dot uh, for, uh, general, general court laws.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I, I'd, I'd like to make one comment. Um, uh, the, the $272,000, uh, as the last warrant article, uh, bothers me, and I like Dick's idea about taking that sentence or that statement and putting it in Article Three to show what you're doing with that money up at the beginning of the meeting rather than as at the last, as the last item.
Is there any reason, um, why it has been, has that been standard to have it as the last item?
Standard, because it doesn't make any difference.
It, 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 it's always been a standard. It's always been a standard, but I'm concerned about the fact that if you wait until the last article and then something happens, now I think you got some budget issues that you got to resolve on the fly. And I don't like that.
Yeah. Good, good, good thinking, but it, this, there's another piece to that whole thinking, which is it doesn't make any, it doesn't help. It's the raise and assess that you write in there in the warrant. You go down through the warrant and add up all the raises and assesses, and you put that in the recap sheet, and the state says, oh, that's how much you're going to raise and assess? Does it meet two and a half? No, you're in trouble.
Can I ask a question? Just, um, this might be a silly question, but all the way through, all these different warrant articles say, um, and we're going to approve them or not, the town is, that we're going to transfer and appropriate from free cash, the sum of 14,000, blah, blah, blah. It, is this at the end, the 272, on top of all those particulars? They're distinct.
Yes, it always is at the end. And, and by the way, it's, it's awful nice to be there because if some adjustment comes in during the, the meeting, and I can tell you one that happened recently, and that was the library, what's it, um, made a, made a, made a motion to amend the FinCom's recommendation of no action on the library roof. And what happened was we took, we, the amendment was to take $10,000 and transfer from free cash to fund the roof, and we did. And then when we got down to the bottom, I think, I think at that point, we amended Article, last article on the thing, um, $250,000 to $240,000 for the $10,000. So, uh, it's, it's very nice to have that, some amount of money in there because you, you can play with it a little bit at the end and, and know that you're right. But in, and in that case, we always have this, we know we're trying to go into the new meat, the new year with, and it's in the policies, something like 700, $700,000 in free cash. So it wouldn't hurt to just take free cash. It's, it's all right to use the free cash, but understand we're affecting our policies when we do that. If you change something within the, within the town meeting.
Okay, um, Kevin, anything else, uh, related to this warrant? I think we, we thought by Tuesday we'll get a copy, uh, the ninth, and we'll review it um, in preparation for our meeting on the 11th. Is there anything else we need to know or get back to you on?
Is that okay with you, Mr. Gant? I know we talked at the top of which versions are getting sent when. If I send a version with, we just talked about plus the additional additions from you and, and others, the next one I submit, is that acceptable? Does that work?
I, I was going to take this up one on one with you after the fact here. We, we had an agreement that, uh, this version would be, or, yeah, this version would be out on Friday, last Friday. But just before it went out, you would have an arrangement with me where I would get it for an hour, two hours to fix the formatting and get it straight once and for all. Uh, that didn't happen. I would suggest that you and I, one on one, try to figure out how we're going to get that to, to get done because it's still, you, you know, we have, we have the title being used. Anyway, it, you want the formatting to be right because otherwise at crunch time, it gets to be awful difficult to, to paginate it and to pull the table of contents and all that sort of thing. So you and I should work on it, and I'll, I'll work with you whatever you want.
I appreciate it. My apologies if, if.
Next, next, next.
Getting information in life.
Okay.
All right, anything else from any other board members before we adjourn? No? Okay.
You adjourn.
Is there a second?
Music to my ears. Second.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Ms. Ramirez, aye. We are, that's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Kevin.